This is Sarah Wolf, calling to order the virtual December 9 meeting of the Manchester Essex Regional School Committee. Welcome to those who are joining us tonight, and thank you to 1623 Studios for recording the meeting and posting it for us. We will begin with public comments, so just to note that tonight's meeting is really for the purpose of holding a public hearing to present the proposed budget for this year, and we will have an additional period after the presentation for comments and questions regarding the budget. But if anybody would like to make a public comment before the meeting starts, you could please put your name and address in the chat. Or if there's anyone on the phone who would like to make a public comment, you may unmute yourself and let us know. Okay. It doesn't look like we have any public comments to begin tonight, so that's great. And I actually don't have a chairman's report tonight because we're really here to hear about the budget. But the one thing I did want to say is that...
I'm sorry, I forgot to... The boards of selectmen and/or the boards of... To order, sorry. Order, sorry.
Great, I'm sorry, go ahead Ruth.
Thank you Sarah. So I do have a quorum, Guy Bradford is on the line with me. So at this time, I'd like to call the Essex Board of Selectmen to order for our December 9 joint meeting with FINCOM and School Committee.
Second that.
Ben, do you have a quorum?
Okay, do we also need the Essex Finance Committee to call a meeting to order?
We do. Ben, I think you have a quorum Ben.
I think we might have lost Ben, I saw him before.
I was going to say... Yeah, I don't see him as well, sorry.
You could certainly allow them to call quorum when he returns. I think there won't be any deliberation in the meantime, so I think that would be probably okay, as long as nobody from Essex minds.
No, that's... I'm fine with that.
Okay, so moving on, and we'll just get our business out of the way so that we can talk about the budget. I just wanted to say I'm glad some people are here, the budget has been a big factor in our decision making this year. We've talked about it a lot, so I think it's really important that people pay attention. Maybe people will come and listen to this later, that would be great. We have a consent agenda, did we get anything?
No, excuse me, no items for the consent agenda tonight.
Alright, I didn't think so, alright.
Because we have a meeting next Tuesday, so we'll have all of our business items then.
Yeah, but you said you do have some committee reports?
We do, we had a finance committee meeting last Friday, and the building committee met last night. So I didn't know if Shannon and Annie wanted to report on both.
Annie wanted to take the building committee?
Well, do we want to wait and do those on Tuesday since only four of us are here? I don't know if that's... It's up to you guys.
I think we can just do a quick report, I mean, I think we can do a quick report out on finance committee, I mean, on collaboration, because there was some timely stuff there, you know, the testing and all, I think that's worth talking about.
Sure. In terms of the building committee, we had a meeting last night, we were on time, on budget. It was a very quick meeting, only half an hour, so all is going well with the Memorial School project.
Awesome, thank you.
And then with regard to finance committee, we had a collaboration meeting, collaboration group meeting last Friday, a few days ago. We updated them with regard to the January 19 hybrid return, and then next week's, I don't know, we should call it a dry run, but when the kids come to school for the in-person days, the two in two days, high school and middle school. We talked about that a little bit, and that kind of led into, you know, talking about what's going on in Manchester with a bit of a spike in COVID, and then it seems to be pretty stable. I think somebody needs to mute, Annie. Is the mic open? Anyway, I'll continue. And I don't want to steal any thunder, but we did have an update from Avi with regard to reimbursement on BMA money, which basically they're now saying everything we have submitted is ineligible. So that's really great news, and I'm being very sarcastic. I will leave the details up to Avi, but that came as very much of a shock. We also took a look at school testing, we've been talking about that in the subgroup. That is comprised of the district, the health nurses, the public health nurses, and members of both boards of health, who have been incredibly, incredibly helpful with their expertise and their time. And I think we're going to be talking about doing some sort of batch testing weekly, and doing it in cohorts of, I believe, 10 to 15. And I think the details still need to be worked out, but it's essentially, you know, kind of a turnkey situation with Beaufort Ambulance out of Gloucester, they run the whole thing. It's the, I think we pay $15 for each cohort, 22 weeks of testing. And I think Pam will probably talk about that a little bit later, but that's looking like it might be about a $55,000 cost, because we have probably about 30, if I'm not mistaken, $30,000 in materials, which is the $15 per cohort for 22 weeks weekly, and then $25,000 for a part-time nurse to kind of, you know, affect all of this. Because I think running something like this is going to be above and beyond the time that our current nurses have. So it's just an extra hand in there that I think we'll need if we're going to do this. And I think, I think that's a big positive. I think that's probably a really good way to open the school for the secondary. I think that'll, you know, go a long way to make people feel comfortable that they're in the building, so I think that's great. And then we just went over the budget, which we're going to do shortly with everybody here. So we just kind of went over the details of what we're looking at on the budget, the preliminary budget, which we're going to be talking about tonight, and I think that's it. Did I miss anything you guys?
Nope.
Great, thanks Shannon.
I'm done, thank you.
Awesome.
Did I lose you guys?
No, you're up.
Okay, I'm up, okay. So my report's also very quick, I'm going to hold on the testing outline until next Tuesday night, when we'll have some of our health subgroup members joining us to talk about kind of the medical perspective, what we can hope to accomplish through it, and then the organizations we hope to be partnering with to get this off the ground post-holiday break. Since we're together tonight, a few updates, because I know there's a lot of COVID talk statewide. We had a rollback, or the rollback of Phase 3 from Step 2 to Step 1 will take effect over the weekend. There are no direct implications for school, but of course it's having some impacts in some of the planned activities that we have, just in terms of evaluating and ensuring we're doing everything that we need to do to make sure they get off the ground. So with hybrid middle school, high school, hybrid planning, we had our town hall last night. I believe the max participants were 73, so a good turnout. Tricia and Joanne went through an abbreviated version of the presentation they did for School Committee, based on questions submitted prior to the meeting. So the key question areas were how does lunch work, the overflow space, managing the high flex so the kids at home and in school, how does that work for a teacher, how does it work for students? And then just the miscellaneous questions, everything from will the seniors have parking spots, to what will it look like for grade 6, so it'll be their first time in the building? So Tricia and Joanne did a great job in the bulk of the presenting last night. Jason Waldron joined us, another hot question was just what are the cleaning protocols going to look like between classes and in the cafeterias? So he ran that down for them, and I think it was a successful night. Not too many follow-up questions today, but we're here to answer any questions that comes our way. So I would say, in terms of planning for the January 19 launch, operational planning is pretty much complete, and we're in the fine-tuning phase. We're having ongoing meetings with the Board of Health, we met with them today. We posed questions to them about our setup, our overflow space, the capacity that every room can handle. And kind of the key questions today, we're given the change in status for Manchester and the ongoing conversation about the surge. Do our large-capacity spaces still meet muster? And we walked away with a very clear mantra, which is, as long as we're adhering to the guidelines, which we are, and following the social distancing rules of masking and maintaining six feet, those mitigating efforts will allow us to continue with the plan as is, unless we hit a crisis point in both towns. And as we've discussed before, this is going to be ongoing conversation between the schools and the Board of Health to assess whether or not we're at a point where we need to roll anything back locally. So as it stands now, we are, all systems go for the 19th, and everything is still planned to go off next week, the start of winter sports with practice, and the in-person days for the middle high school. Those are four half-days next week. Again, with our eye to the 19th of January, staffing, you know, the three S's, schedule, space, and staffing. We've resolved 78% of the staffing issues, and we're on track for case completion prior to the holiday vacation. We posted positions for anticipated leaves that we've identified through this process. And everyone is very optimistic that we'll be able to find people to fill the slots. So things are looking to be in good shape in that arena. So we're actually optimistic and excited, and looking forward to the break, of course, but also to getting back, to having kids on campus at the middle high school at the beginning of next year. Two other things that came up this week, and we can review them again next week, but very briefly. January MCAS has been postponed, I think recognition that the logistics of things just weren't going to be feasible. Not so much for us, Tricia had a great plan in place for it to be executed, but I think statewide, everyone is in such a different place with their space, with their COVID numbers, and their ability to create a safe space for kids to take it. I think they saw some inequities in it, so that's been pushed off. There'll be no penalty to the seniors, the seniors are still grandfathered into the rules from last year. If they needed to take the test, it'll be basically waived for them, or they can find a different way of showing their competency determination. I don't believe we have anybody who is in a difficult position there. Then just something to keep your eye on, earlier this year, earlier this fall, in mid-November, we submitted a time and learning, our student time and learning report to the DESE. They were assessing the different programs and the amount of time spent in synchronous versus asynchronous work. So trying to get a handle on, I mean, we're always talking about the different versions of hybrid and remote and combinations of schedules that exist on the North Shore. The DESE was trying to figure out statewide, what was the learning time really looking like for kids across the board? So we anticipate that next week they're going to be coming out with some recommended hours for what they're calling live learning time. So a combination of in-person and synchronous structured online learning time that every school will have to meet. So think of time and learning applied to the virtual and hybrid environment. They're looking at somewhere between, at elementary and high school, they've ballparked 35 to 40 hours per week, per 10-day cycle, depending on your configuration. And we are already at 50 hours for elementary and 55 hours for middle high school, which would bring us to traditional time and learning numbers. So I think we'll be in good shape in terms of not having to make any significant changes to the amount of time or the structure of our day. And that's been one of the aspects of the program that we have been very pleased with throughout, which is we are able to, to a certain extent, replicate the structure of the school day in an online environment, even when we have kids going in and out of the hybrid. And just my last update for tonight is the elementary hybrid seems to be moving along quite well. Again, routine's established, we're in a consistent pattern right now. With the COVID numbers popping up, we are seeing staffing issue becoming an increasing challenge. Not in terms of leaves, but just in terms of day-to-day absences and quarantines. There's been an uptick in student and staff quarantines post-Thanksgiving, most of it manageable, but we have had to turn one class to remote for a 14-day quarantine period. That's been communicated to the parents from the principal, and things seem to be moving along okay. In a quarantine situation, the teacher is just basically directed to stay out of school for the safety of others. No indication that the individual's sick at this point, and she's able to work remotely from home. So kids are continuing to get instruction, we're providing some in-class support as well. So that's about where we're at tonight. I think we're just kind of in a watching phase too, we're aware that things may change day-to-day. But everything is moving along as planned, on time and on, well, not on budget, but on time and as planned for the hybrid, and the planned move to hybrid for the secondary. So things are pretty good this week.
Sarah, may I ask a question?
If that is, if you're done.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm done.
Yep. Okay. I just want to explore kind of what goes on in the classroom if there's a quarantine situation with a teacher. So a teacher is out, and if they're not sick, they are teaching remotely from home. Are the kids all remote as well, or are the kids still going in on their two days on, two days off, and getting some sort of like, you know, teacher's aid or something in the classroom to facilitate that online learning while they're in the classroom?
Yes to both. If we have enough staff available, there is somebody in the classroom, so they're in school participating in the remote learning. If we don't have enough staff, it may have to flip to everyone being remote for a few days. So it completely depends on staffing.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. But all efforts are made to keep the cohort coming in with the teacher working remotely in that situation. Does that make sense?
Yes. Any other questions for Pam? Alright, I guess we're ready to move along to the public hearing section of the meeting.
We should probably just take a timeout for a few minutes and start it right at 6:30, because that's what we posted on the agenda.
Oh, I see that.
But that may give us just a few minutes to resolve our technical problem.
Okay.
This is what we've done in the past, just because we posted it for the 6:30 hour, we wouldn't want somebody to miss the introduction.
I mean, I could have talked longer.
I guess I was anticipating some public comment as well.
And I think we had a parking lot item in case the Essex FINCOM wanted to call into session, which they certainly have time to do.
Avi, my question to you is, can you maneuver and switch over to the PowerPoint presentation? Do you see the dropdown menu at the top that has the different documents that have been uploaded?
I have not used embedded documents, but if you tell me where they are, I could probably pull them up. And if not, email to me, I can pull it that way.
I'm also going to try joining the meeting, I'm having, it says I have a session open, but it's not showing me my session. Give me one second, let me see if I can resolve here, so I can drive for you, and if not...
While you're doing that, maybe what I'll do is, this is Ben Buttrick, Chair of the Essex FINCOM, and just make a motion to call the Finance Committee into session. I'm not sure if we have a quorum. Alright, all in favor?
Aye, Mike Flynn.
Aye, Ben Buttrick. Nina, are you on? Do we have any other members of the Essex FINCOM?
I have Nina listed, Ben.
Yeah, I see her in here too. Well, it may be okay, because we're not going to be voting on anything at this point, so we'll sit tight.
So Pam, I can see now where those documents would be, but they're grayed out for me. So if you just email me the slides, I can pull them up.
It looks like I have control of my mouse again, and I'm getting back in.
Okay.
Yay, I fixed it. That was really stressing me out.
I have a question for you Pam, but could we look into for a future report? Not probably this Tuesday, and certainly not right now, but there was an article in the, like, the Newburyport paper about number of failing students in districts in the North Shore. And then I know that was also a big national story this week. So at some point, could we get an update on how our kids are doing academically in the current model?
Yes, principals are, in response to the article, principals are working on their numbers. Middle school is trimester, so I would say next meeting we should be able to at least have a estimate of what it will look like.
Yeah, thanks.
Yep. Okay, I have 6:30 on my computer clock, is everyone else syncing up with me? Okay. So with all this anticipation, we are here to present the tentative budget overview. We presented to the School Committee initially last week. We also visited with the Essex FINCOM, as Shannon mentioned earlier, in the interim. But tonight, we're here to present it to the general public, and then take some inputs on it after. So if we could hold comments and putting names in the chat until we're done, we'll do all questions at the end. We'll try to be as brief as possible, but we do have a bit of material to get through. And then, because it is a public input session, we'll run feedback similar to the way that we ran, we would typically run public comments. So if you would like to ask a question, please just put your name and address in the chat box, and Sarah or I will call on you, and we'll get your question on the official record. So with that being said, a brief introduction. So I see there are a lot of familiar names in the participant list, and some new names. For those who are new to the process, this is kind of a tag team between Avi and I. Avi handles all of the numbers, so you know that they're sound and not back of the envelope, not Pam Math, as we call it. And I'll usually provide a little bit of background or commentary on kind of the school-related side or the thinking behind how we've arrived at certain things. So we work together on the budget throughout the process, and we tend to present together. So quickly, our budget process always starts with our goals and our objectives. So on the first tier of goals are the School Committee goals, from which we then derive the budget goals. And I won't read them to you, these will all be posted after. Which, I think of note, whatever we're trying to achieve in the district programmatically, which is usually established in the General School Committee goals, when it comes to the budget goals, we are always mindful of Prop 2.5, in knowing that whatever we want to do in terms of growth or improvements of the program, or just sustaining the quality level that we have, we have to do so within the confines of Prop 2.5, unless we've already had discussions with the towns and the boards about a strategy or a pathway to increasing funding. So we know that we have to live within our means, and that we have to be mindful that the majority of our budget is funded through taxpayer revenue. So we are accountable to them for our planning, our objectives, and our spending. At the school level, budgets are bottoms-up, principals are responsible for overseeing budget development at their level. Those budgets roll up to a central process where we merge them together, discuss our wants and needs for the coming year, and then eventually arrive at what we call the superintendent's budget, which is the budget presented in two stages, the tentative and final in January. When we do develop the budget, these are the four main buckets that we have in mind. We always begin with student needs, we're aware of fixed costs, and facilities is another key area. But under student needs, whether it's general ed or special ed, that is where we want our resources to be going. But I feel like the right-hand side of the grid often pulls a bit from, the right-hand side often pulls from the left-hand side. So the fixed costs are what have, the bills that have to be paid first, they're typically contractual. And you'll see from our presentation where about 80% plus of our budget goes, which doesn't leave a lot left over for what the wants and needs are for program development. So I think we always start very high level with where we want to go, but we end up with a lot of deferments in order to pay the bills. It's not a complaint, it's just a reality. It's not unlike any budget that exists, whether it's a family or a business, you have to take care of your responsibilities before you can look at investments to grow what you're doing. Special education gets its own box, we'll talk a little bit about that throughout the presentation. Special education is, it's student-driven, but it's also mandate-driven. So it actually, we should probably recreate this grid and show special ed straddling both sides. There are often costs that we have to out, expenses we have to outlay that are beyond our control, and mandated by law that we spend. So things like a placement into an out-of-dist... So things like a placement into an out-of-district school. So if we can't service student needs within district because we don't have a program available to them or the disability is so severe that it requires a specialized environment, the towns under IDA are required to pay for that expense so that the children can access their education. So again, the program development we do in district to attempt to counter out-of-district placements is where we like to invest. The out-of-district placements is sometimes where we lose control of what the spending can be. So again, always starting with student needs, mindful of what our financial responsibilities are and trying to balance those two things throughout the process. So that's kind of how we think about what we need in the budget. And Avi's going to start taking you through where our budget lands this year with all of those things in mind.
Thank you, Pam, and hello, everybody. So, you know, we talk frequently about how we provide a level services budget, which is basically starting to say, how do we roll the program that we have forward each year without making changes to the program, you know, from a budgetary standpoint? The concept being that funding is always limited. And so if we do need to make additions, we want to try to do that with existing funds. So we try to ensure that what we're showing from a budget standpoint is really starting with keeping the program whole. That's what we call level services. Of course, things, you know, cost more in each year in certain cases. Some things do not. Things that do not cost more, we roll forward with no increase. Some things, we can get savings. Those can come forward with cost decreases. And then there are other things that go up over time and that accounts for the budgetary growth. Importantly, with COVID being a big financial cost, and we'll talk a little bit more about that later, we've excluded that from the budget because it isn't really part of what I would consider level services. We had some conversation with the school committee about strategically how we wanted to account for that. We'll show you a little bit about what COVID is costing us currently. It will not be here forever. We don't know how long it will be here for. But at this point, given that so much of what we're funding through COVID is coming out of grants, and if you look at the last bullet on this page, it kind of talks to that. Either from the CARES Act, which is the federal legislation, anticipated FEMA, and Shannon talked a little bit about that, we'll touch on that later, which is Federal Emergency Management, I'm not sure what the A stands for, Administration. And whatever we can't fund from there would be coming, if there is budgetary savings potentially, but probably out of MERSD reserve funds, rainy day funds. So given that it's primarily expected to be funded out of the base operating budget, we don't include it in the level services, but we will talk to it. And the financial impact is certainly significant. So we'll come back to that. As I mentioned, when there are programs, we try to fund them with existing funds. We've done that for many years by thinking creatively about how to restructure operations wherever we can. And as the past couple of years, funding has gotten a little bit tighter in, with the goal of trying to make sure we keep our budget within Proposition 2 and 1/2. We've had to make certain cuts, which, you know, have not been restored and we don't typically have the funding to restore those. And so it really turns into a situation where unless we're going to restructure something else to come up with the funding, those cuts tend to carry forward. You know, basically, we do feel like our budget is, with some of the anticipated cuts that we still need to make to get to our target numbers, is sustainable. There are some mandated items that are pretty large, you know, like health insurance and special ed transportation, is another one we'll talk about tonight, that are a little spiky or sometimes grow beyond Prop 2 and 1/2. For example, health insurance, typical national growth rates for cost of health insurance is about 6% to 8% per year. So right out of the gate, that's something that doesn't typically fit neatly within Prop 2 and 1/2. It's our second-largest cost after people. We're primarily a people organization. So those are areas where you have to think on a multi-year basis how to get creative to maintain sustainability. But when we see numbers at the outset of the budget season, the tentative season, that can be above our targets, it's often because of some of these costs that are mandated that tend to grow at levels beyond 2 and 1/2, where we have to put them in there. They're in the budget now, it's part of level services, we're not adding to program. But we know we're going to need to find some savings to keep the entire budget within Prop 2 and 1/2. So just if we go back real quickly to the last slide, sorry, one other thing. So there, you know, we talked about budget gaps. Those are the differences between spending and revenue sources. And we're going to talk more about this. Typically, at each tentative season, what we do is we try to bring in a high-watermark budget, ideally for what the assessments might be for the towns. Because when we started showing the total spending, including some of the wants and needs, I think there was obviously a lot of concern or shock that it might trip in override. And as you look back to our budget goals, you know, we're intending to land this budget within the levy limit, as we've done for the past several years. So as a result, at this point, we still have a gap between where we see the current level services spending projections, including some of the estimates, and the revenue that we have to cover, assuming that we do not trip it override. So the time last year, for example, was about $400, I think at $30,000. It typically ends up being in the $300,000 to $600,000 level around this time of year until we can really start to dig in and figure out where can we achieve savings? Where might our estimates be conservative? Where might, there might be additional funding, that sort of thing. Last year, or at last year at this time, when we were planning the current year fiscal '21 budget, we did put in $335,000 of reserve funding into our revenue budget to keep us from having to cut our program further to balance our budget. So we have held that number steady, rather than cut our budget to come up with $335,000. And when you add that to the new deficit that we have at this point of $276,000, that's how you get to a current differential between our spending targets and our eventual, I'll show you these numbers in a second, our assessment targets of $611,000. $275,000 is fresh, new, anticipated delta between revenue and expense, with $335,000 carried forward from fiscal '21. So in some ways, it's a little bit better, but the reserve usage is carrying forward. What are the big numbers for the budget? $28 million for spending. It's a 4 and 1/4 spending increase, a little higher than we typically have at this point, but not much. And if you look, you can see here, this one of the subbullets talks about the spending gaps we've had in prior years, 430, 380, 900. That was when we were absorbing a big health insurance increase in that year. And $275,000 is the new gap. What does it mean for the towns? That's the operating assessment. 3.75% is the current target of where we have things. And that's basically paying for all of our spending, the $1.14 million of new spending, after deducting potential non-town revenue sources. And we'll talk about those, the biggest ones being the state aid, Chapter 70 program. And even though the state aid situation, which we'll talk about, is not great, we do have some potential budgetary gains because we've budgeted the current year so conservatively. The 3.75%, you know, we're on a five-year average annual increase of 3.17, which is below that number. So, you know, we've done pretty well for the past several years, I think. And that's despite the, you know, I would say in light of the fact that state aid has only increased 2%. So because state aid growth rate has been so low, the assessment had to be a little bit higher in order to pay for our spending. So we move to the next slide. What are the major storylines in the budget? Compensation is, you know, I believe it's about 65% of our costs. There's a pie chart I'll show you. So it's growing a little slower. I'll come back to some of the details. Health insurance, the next biggest, those are our two biggest costs, they're two biggest areas of growth. And then out-of-district tuition and transportation in the area of special education. So hitting the first one, in terms of compensation right now, our preliminary read on the tentative budget is a 4.0% growth rate. It's in the high end of our multi-year budgeting scenarios, but it's in line and no new FTE. We have a, we're going to be, fiscal '22 is the third and final year of our current teacher's contract, which has a 2 and 1/2% cost of living or COLA adjustment in it. There's often additional costs on top of it that we have to budget for people in their first 14 years who are getting additional compensation for added years of experience. Those are called step increases. We also have contractual provisions, and we'll show, I think, a picture of the chart later, how that looks, of what we call column moves, which are basically additional compensation that people can earn for higher levels of educational attainment as they pursue more advanced degrees in areas that benefit the school district or around educational programming. So there is potentially some savings, you know, that could come each year from retirements. We don't have that yet. There's also, we have to balance that with some of our, you know, other needs that need to happen. So we really use a lot of the restructuring opportunities over the past couple of years. So we don't have a lot of those left, but there could be some savings there going forward because we know we still need to reduce that gap that we talked about. On the health insurance side, right now, we're starting with a 6% initial rate increase. If you remember last year's budget, at this time, you were talking 10%. You may also remember that we finalized our budget towards the end of January, early February. And at that point, we're really looking at current utilization through December. Right now, we're looking at it through the July-August timeframe of the current year. So the current year results on how much health insurance we're using is really only just started through July and August. And by the time we finalize the budget, we'll have a little bit more data through December, claims through December, that will help us to get a better sense of comfort about what number we put in there. Last year was much higher. We have done some restructuring as part of the teacher's contract. We did agree to migrate to higher deductible health insurance plans. That started in the current, last year's budget fiscal '20. It's rolling into the current budget as well. And so in return for higher deductibles, we get lower premiums. So that's good. We save money on the district portion. Deductibles are employee-paid. But we also take some of that savings, which is about 11%, you know, decrease in annual premiums. And we contribute a portion of it to an employer-funded health reimbursement account, which provides employees with some relief on some of that out-of-pocket increase that they pay with the higher deductibles. So they get a little benefit on the premium, they get some money from us from our savings because we pay about 70% to 75% of the cost of insurance. So it's kind of a win-win. And we've seen that not only has it helped us to lower our rate of growth, but we've also seen that utilization has been down. So for this reason, going into our second year of the HRA program, we are seeing that our utilization is definitely down from where it was 24 months ago. And we feel like starting at 6 is good. And we do think that that number could potentially come down. But given that the claims we have are only through August right now, it's a little too early to do that. And typically, for those who are keeping track of how much money we can save, it's about just $40,000 to $45,000 for each point of reduction. For those who remember our OPEB conversations, which is Other Post-Employment Benefits, OPEB, that's the state mandate to provide health insurance to retirees who retire with pension eligibility. State requires that school districts and municipalities fund retiree healthcare until death. And so OPEB has been a whole area of analysis for us where we look at what our obligation will be as we continue to add more retirees to our pool. For those who may not know this, when we were regionalized in 2001, we began with zero retirees because the legacy retirees of the Manchester Public Schools and Essex Public Schools stayed with the towns. So that was great for us as getting off, you know, on our feet independently as a district. But it also means that while we started with lower costs, the growth rate each year has not just been those rate increases, which is the 6% we talked about in the first bullet, you know, that we're targeting now, but also growth in heads. And so we're in a situation now where the total number of retirees are 164 more than the active employees. So this is exactly what the actuaries were talking about when they talked about OPEB. And as many of you know, our regional school district, through partnership with the Teachers Association, in, I think, 2016, came up with a very innovative model that very few regional schools are really anywhere close to where we're at in terms of funding OPEB. We pre-fund the obligation now so that the money can be invested through state acceptable investments. And that helps to offset the cost to taxpayers. We've also had the teachers agree to less costly plans as well as higher contribution rate that employees contribute. And in return, the savings that we generated from all of that as a district, as the employer, all go into trust. So we now have $2 million plus in our OPEB trust fund, including the fiscal '21, '22 allocations that we're expecting to do through our formula. We should be over $3 million. So that's been going really well. But you can see how at some point, you're going to need to pivot from setting aside money to starting to use it to offset the annual obligation. So that's something that we may be talking about, either in this budget season or in a budget season soon. And then moving over to the last item, which is out-of-district transportation and tuition. If you've been paying attention to the past couple of budget cycles, you know we had a big uptick in out-of-district tuition in fiscal '20. It was primarily related to new residents who might have moved in. Most of the kids who've been served in district for many years have been able to be served by our in-district programs. For those who aren't familiar, our Student Services Director, Alison Collins, has spent many years developing really terrific out-of, in-district programs that can serve kids in our school system without having to send them to an expensive placement, but also keeping them with their peers here in our schools. And that's required some investment of staff. But as we've shown for several years, it does have a significant net savings after the cost of staffing those programs is taken into account. So really, the out-of-district spike that we've seen in the past two years has just been kids who may have more, I'd say differentiated needs that are such that we don't have a large pool of kids with similar needs where we can service them here. Maybe one or two kids who might have a need like that. And so that led to a pretty big increase in fiscal '20 and the current fiscal '21 year. You can see we have, you know, these are expensive placements because of the type that we can't serve in district. So we have several that are over $100,000. The good news is, after having that big growth, we did get a big reimbursement from the state through the Circuit Breaker program where they have a special one-time, I would say, a reimbursement program called Extraordinary Relief for any district that have had a 25% growth or larger. So we were able to get $180,000 offset to fiscal '20, which was great. And in fiscal '21 and '22, we're not seeing much more than about $50,000 of new growth, 6%. Some of which is really in the current year. That could be handled through a current year budget transfer, but we haven't made that transfer in the current year yet. So it's more current year anticipated growth and maybe a little bit in '22. But I think the big picture story here is that this spending has pretty much stabilized after two years of pretty big spikes. However, on the transportation side, we are showing $150,000 increase in this area, which is why this whole category got the $201,000 allocation of our total spending growth. About half of that is spending increases we think will happen in the current year that might otherwise be handled through a budget transfer. The other half is expected next year, looking forward at some of the placements that we expect. The other thing to know is that I talked about the Circuit Breaker program. The Student Opportunity Act, also known as the SOA, which is a state funding program where they attempted to revise how funding is provided through the main state revenue program called Chapter 70, but also through Circuit Breaker, did anticipate a multi-year phase-in for the first time ever of funding, not only of out-of-district costs, which is already in Circuit Breaker, but finally now, some of the out-of-district transportation costs. That's always been left up to districts, and it's been very expensive in some cases. Think, for example, if you have one student who's going to a program that might be not so close and you can't combine and run multiple students, you get into some very inefficient transportation costs. So unfortunately, the state was supposed to start that phase-in of funding for transportation with fiscal '20 reimbursement that would arrive in '21. That was delayed due to COVID, and we're not hearing that that's about to start in fiscal '21. So that means that we're going to be, this $150,000 transportation growth for out-of-district, at this point, we're assuming it's going to be all on the district's side. So some of the things we're targeting... So some of the things we're targeting to, you know, close the growth, the gap that we have currently right now, I talked about health insurance. If we were able to take about three points off of our growth rate from six down to three, which, you know, it's early in the year to be talking about that, but I think that gives you a sense of, I certainly wouldn't be talking about it at this point if I didn't feel like our numbers have been much better, which they are. That could yield about $130,000. Again, we just don't have enough data at this point to know. And we get, you know, every month that goes by, we'll get another set of claims. And then second thing, I talked about, maybe there's some retirements that could help us. There could be some restructuring that's necessary, but we've also talked about how FTE reductions, you know, even last year, we felt were not advisable, which is why we started to put more reserve revenue into our budget to balance the budget. So I just want to talk briefly about non-town revenue. So we're starting, you know, in a theoretically balanced budget scenario, assuming about 4.25% spending growth. Again, we said it's a little bit high for where we're at typically. We think it'll, you know, put them down. It only yields a 3.75% town assessment number. Why? Because this year, even though we've seen an average per year of 2% growth in state aid, we're factoring a much higher level of growth because we're starting with the current-year budget from a suppressed number, we believe. So let me first explain what's going on with that, and then we can get into the prognostications for next year. So those who remember our budget cycle for fiscal '21, current budget, will remember that we took down our state aid numbers by 10% in May in anticipation of a massive budget deficit, which has in fact materialized at the state level due to COVID. Tax receipts were down. We're hearing from our state reps to expect 10% to 20% state aid reduction. And as things have materialized and time has gone on, state has come through with level services, sorry, level funding for Chapter 70. So that was great, and that allows us to, you know, have a little bit of a benefit in the current year, which will be good. We're assuming for fiscal '22 that we're going to be level, no increase with the current year expected. So again, we're just essentially bringing up the numbers from where we're at. I would say at this point, that's a neutral assumption. I don't think it's, I don't think it's aggressively high. I don't think it's too low. I think we just don't know. I was on a call today with some of the, a person from the House and from the state Senate talking about the funding scenario, and I think they said it's just really too early to tell what's going to happen with fiscal '22. In terms of the current year, as we get closer, the state, you may know, only passed a few months of its budget. It didn't even pass a full-year budget because it was uncertain, and so we've been expressing some caution about the fact that we would get level funding for Chapter 70 in the current year. But as we get closer and closer to January, typically, the state is very cautious in cutting its revenue to schools because they have less time to make up for those cost changes. So I'm optimistic that if there is a mid-year cut this year, it would be small, and we might get through the year without that. I think we really just don't know what's going to happen with fiscal '22. We do know that there's a state budget gap. We also know that the state has been trying to acknowledge the fact that school districts are spending so much more money trying to make education happen, and they're not inclined to ask us for more while providing us less. So this is an area we just need to watch, and I think as the months come up, we'll certainly be hearing more. And then for school choice revenue, we are assuming flat school choice revenue. That's $325,000. That's where we budget the amount that we expect to receive, but not more or less, for students who come from out of other districts to participate through the school choice program into our school system. When we were going through fiscal '21 planning, even though we kept that number at $325,000, we did not replace the graduating students, 12 graduating students in the class of 2020, because we were dealing with situations where we had to suddenly fit the same number of resident students in a much smaller space due to safe distancing, where we're now spacing kids at it at six feet. So we didn't feel that time that was prudent to take that graduating 12 students of school choice kids and bring them in. Having said that, looking forward to next year, I think at this point, I think it's safe to say that it's feasible by the time we get to fiscal '22, although we just don't know. The number of graduating students on top of that that we would need to replace would be five based on current figures from the class of 2021. So that's kind of a question mark, and I think we're going to have to watch that as well and see how enrollment happens. For those of you who do not, have not been part of these discussions before, we get $5,000 per student plus a small increment for special education services that we document. And typically, because that's less than, you know, our average per people cost, it doesn't make sense to take it financially unless we're adding them into a classroom where we already have some space and we're below our class size guidelines. It certainly does not make sense to add students in where you would need to find additional staffing because then the trade-off isn't worth it. So it's kind of a marginal cost type of analysis, and we always take that into consideration. This is a quick look at the biggest areas of spending. You can see the '21 versus '22, and I forgot to fix this, I apologize. It says percentage of fiscal '21 spending. It should say percentage of fiscal '22 spending. And really, we just try to show the biggest areas. It's, you know, 65% going to personnel. We talked about how that's growing a little bit less quickly at 61%. Insurance, pension, OPEB is next, taking about 20% of our spending. And then maintenance, transportation, including out-of-district transportation, and then out-of-district spending. And then you start getting into much smaller items. I'll show you what they are. And then the growth rates are in the right two columns where you can see what's growing. And we've shown the $275,000, $276,000 growth cut that we need to absorb as well. And so you can see, you know, personnel growing slower than budget at 4%. Insurance and pension growing faster. You know, we talked about the 6% rate increase. It's growing a little higher than that partly because of the increase in heads for retirees. I talked about that, also partly because we have to fund our pension. We don't have pension for teachers. That's funded by the state. There's no employer match for licensed personnel like teachers and administrators, just for non-licensed personnel like teaching assistants, paraprofessionals, a few custodians. We have administrative assistants. And so that's on a, on a plan, just like the towns are having to. Mass General Law has required that the pension organizations go on a multi-year track to fund, to become fully funded. So we're facing 7% increases for another year there. And then transportation, that's where you can see that big increase I talked about. I talked about $150,000 of it being for out-of-district and not much more, with $168,000 of total growth in the regular education, sorry, the daily student transportation line. And then in the other area called other, it's usually such a small category that doesn't amount to much, but you can see a big growth number there, which usually there isn't much story there, but in this case, $123,000. $70,000 of that is to fund the School Resource Officer that hasn't been put into a fiscal '21 budget update yet, and so we just need to make sure that gets into the budget for '22. So that's where it is for now in the, in the school security line. It's not one of our top five costs. That's why you're seeing growth in that area. So here's just a visual on the same things we just showed. You can really see where people organization, I often say towns are often, you know, a lot more capital intensive, whereas we are more people intensive. And you can see that even though we talk a lot about things like transportation and out-of-district for special ed, there's a small portion of our budget that the reason we spend time talking about them is because when they grow, they can grow disproportionately to their total percentage. Same thing with insurance. This is just what makes up the $1.1 million in increased spending. So whereas the last one is total spending, this is just where the growth is going. And you can see insurance and pension, for example, growing at 34% even though it's 19 points of total spending as an example. And transportation growing a much higher rate, and you can see also we've got the reductions in here as well. And then this is just for people who want to see what is in the other category. Again, this is just $1.5 million on a $30 million budget. So it isn't worth a lot of time, but here are some of the ways that breaks down between instructional technology, instructional supplies, and administrative supplies and legal at both the school level and in the district level, as well as contracted services for special education. Those are the biggest areas. The other ones, like athletics or school security, I talked about the resource officer, those are much smaller.
Abby, could you give a few examples of administrative costs?
Sure. Well, yep. So at the school level, it's often, you know, for example, printing paper. It's, it might be any type of subscription to like a principal's association. Those are very small dollars, for example, where they get professional development. You would think it'd be in professional development, but it's really more of an administrative cost at the district level. It could be things like our administrative software, for example, all the software we run. And increasingly, we have migrated to quite a bit of software to run the school district. So for example, our student information system, our ledger software, payroll software, which is, you know, SaaS, software as a service. Those types of things would be there. Those are much larger than the types of things you see at the building level, which are really papers and supplies primarily. So, and then obviously, there's legal costs, there's cost of our audit every year, that type of thing, and, you know, any other type of contracted services that we might need, you know, an actuarial valuation for OPEB would fall into that category as well.
And then can you just explain a little bit, like, so special ed contracted is still services for students. Why would it appear here and not in the total overall special ed line?
So if you go back to the slides before, it's, the special ed isn't broken out as its own area. It's really, if you go back one more, it's really throughout everything. And so special ed is baked right into the personnel line because we have a lot of special ed staff, and it's also in the out-of-district area. So the only thing that's not in here that is in the other orange slice here, if you go back to the other slice here, yep, is contracted services. So there are a few types of services that we might get that are not personnel-based, not staff-based, but might be from an outsourced agency, for example, like, for example, physical therapy. We don't have enough services to need necessarily somebody on staff, and so that might happen through a contract. We don't currently have SLP and OT, but those are examples. This is kind of from prior years. There could be other types of services we might need to contract with, you know, organizations that may provide support, but do it on a, on a contract basis. Maybe they come in for a couple of months, do some work, but are not really part of our recurring staff. All right. So we talked about, so if I just, just going, before we hit the slide, I guess you can keep it up here, but that's really the overview of where the money is going for the fiscal '22 budget. I talked at the beginning about the fact that, you know, we have excluded the COVID costs from the budget because we don't really see it as a level services cost, even though we have, obviously have to pay for it. So this is a quick overview that Pam and I have worked together to, put together to kind of give school committee some updates on how things are going through the current year. And these numbers are going to continue to get refined. Some of them are estimated, some of them are actuals, and there are some moving targets. I think the big thing to think about is going to the bottom first. We have received $403,000 from the CARES Act and from the ESR grant. And that's what we've been given for funding for COVID. There is also money that's eligible for FEMA. Typically, FEMA has said we don't want to touch instructional COVID response. We don't want to touch staff. We just want to handle anything that's emergency-related. And the guidance that was being provided in, when FEMA first declared it's emergency has really shifted entirely, I would say. I don't even want to say dramatically or significantly. It's been a complete about-face, for lack of a better phrasing. So whereas initially, they said, yes, bring us some of your items related to facility response that are, that could be conveyed as emergency, cleaning, PPE, and maybe some facilities costs. You know, we submitted a little over $200,000 to FEMA. We spent quite a bit of time documenting those costs and providing to them, and the federal level started to signal that it was getting, I think, maybe a little concerned about the rising potential cost of what it takes to open a school safely, and they started to back away. And so the MEMA Massachusetts, Massachusetts branch has been extremely supportive, and they said, well, we believe the new guidance is coming out effective September 15th, so make sure to get everything you can in before that because we don't think they can limit the scope of what they'll reimburse prior to that, which we did. To find out, the new guidance came out, and they're not willing to pay for PPE unless it's being used to take care of a specific COVID case. So any PPE that staff would wear to be safe in the building on a preventative measure, that is not considered an emergency response to them. Cleaning that you would do, we use a whole lot of sanitization that we need to do, a whole lot of supplies, unless you're responding to a specific COVID case in your building. FEMA has just announced that they don't want to pay for that either. So similarly, we put a lot of investment into touchless systems so we can, you know, make sure people are not putting their hands all over everything, as an example. We've done a whole lot around heating, ventilation, air conditioning, airflow, which has been required. You can't really get people in buildings without looking into that, and there's been a lot of guidance of how important it is to make sure that you make the building safe. There's been a lot of public health experts talking about how to do that, and the district has done a great job. Jason Waldron, who's really head up a lot of these areas as our facilities manager that would come under COVID funding, sorry, under FEMA funding, has really gotten us ready so that we have been able to tell staff, you know, we have our building as safe as it can be. We've done rebalancing. We hired an engineer. We upgraded all of our filters to, you know, make sure that they were filtering at much smaller particulate level. We have in-space air purifiers only in places where we have outdated, you know, older buildings, like Essex is some spaces where it's not on the new building management system or some of the old memorial spaces. We put air purifiers in there, all things that were, the engineer has said that, you know, enabled us to meet the standard, and FEMA has declined to take those on. It's not final and official, but that is the guidance we're getting. We asked them for a determination, even though we submitted our costs about two months ago because we wanted to know what we might have to fund through the CARES Act if FEMA doesn't pick it up. So originally, we were hoping, and we were told to expect, you know, maybe 75% up to that number. We thought maybe we might get 50%, but at this point, we're not really expecting just about anything, other than some of our costs related to specific cases, which are small. So that's kind of a big, a big blow, to be perfectly honest, but it's going to put more pressure on funding some of these costs through our reserves and other CARES Act funds. Moving up, we've talked about some of the other areas. Technology has been a massive investment at $465,000. Most of that spending is done, and we believe when all is said and done, that number could top just over $500,000, some of which has gone to move in a direction we are already moving, which is getting to one-to-one for, which we already had at the middle school, you know, and at the high school through students' own devices. But we were largely there at the elementary school, and we were moving there partly with the building project. This is acceleration of that, but a large number of our costs are really for things that are specifically related to COVID, like enabling remote instruction, having video streaming from the classroom through things like Zoom and through devices in the classrooms that can handle that, and sound system enhancements, et cetera. So that's the technology side, and we do anticipate additional custodial And um, we do anticipate additional custodial for the increased sanitization uh, that's going to be necessary. So, you know, that on top of the staffing, which Pam can talk a little bit about, you know, is how we get to numbers that are, you know, well over a million dollars. Um, and um, absent much more than the CARES Act funding, you know, a large portion of this is going to fall onto the district. So Pam, do you want to touch on some of the staffing um, concepts you have there?
Sure, the staffing's pretty straightforward and is running um, unfortunately, true to our early estimates about what we would need to support um, hybrid learning. So the chart is just showing you where we're alloc- where we've had to put additional people to help facilitate uh, either absences, assists in class, manage the flow of students throughout the building, uh, increase people on buses, uh, in the cafeterias and other um, areas where kids will congregate and need to be um, just supervised so that they adhere to the social distancing. Uh, and the monitors, TAs, they're being utilized also as um, you, if you were on for my report earlier, day-to-day staffing, quarantines, people needing to be out for a few days to get tested and and get test results, is creating a lot of pressure for on-the-spot substitute needs. So the TAs, the monitors, they are, they are in addition to a very light um, external sub crew, to make sure that we can keep the kids who are in their hybrid cohort coming in on days when someone may have to be absent. So all in all, um, our estimates are running true. This represents just um, primarily elementary hiring at this point. We are in the process of doing the hiring for the middle high school, so you see a couple of additions uh, in their columns. But I would anticipate that within the next month, that uh, we could be looking at between 250 and 500,000 additional for staffing. 500 is really on the high water mark. Uh, we have about four uh, leaves to fill and four open cases. So if everything um, moves toward needing a long-term sub replacements, we could possibly hit that number. But we're going to keep an eye on it, and we've been able to, you know, try to manage to budget as best as possible. But COVID has been, you know, I don't think it was popular to bring up as a topic early on, but the cost of managing the schedule under COVID, I think, has been um, front of mind for us from the outset and part of our um, assessment in in what made sense. So I, I know we are not the only district running into this level of um, of spending, and I think you'll probably see in the new year, a greater discussion about um, the need for additional uh, CARES or COVID-based relief for schools to be able to manage to stay open.
And on that note, um, I was on, as I mentioned, on a call with some state legislators today with some other, with business managers, at a business manager meeting for Masbowl. And and there was some discussion of potential um, new stream of funding through CARES, that through the existing CARES money that's already there, um, the, you know, i- it might generate something like, you know, 40 to 50,000 dollars for our district, nothing that significant, and it, I don't know if it's even final. Um, but obviously, we'll take what we can get. Obviously, I think the bigger impact is looking forward to um, what might come with a new set of relief. Um, also, the um, current uh, legislation for CARES, that the money has to be spent by December 30th. Um, there has been no signal currently. Um, there really haven't been much signals of anything um, at the federal level, uh, to our disappointment. Uh, but there hasn't been any signals either about extending that deadline, but it seems like that could be at least a no-cost way to at least provide a little more flexibility. Obviously, some of these staffing costs are going to continue, whereas some of the more um, discrete uh, operating expenses that you see uh, in the chart, um, are kind of, can be done uh, once there's, once they're paid for. So this brings up uh, the next topic, which is where, where does the money come from? And um, this is the, the annual chart we show. I realize it's um, got a lot of numbers on it, but it's basically our, our reserves. And so just moving left to right to show you what you're looking at, the first set of numbers going in that column, G F Budget is the general fund budget. And we tried it, it, to the right of that are some numbers that show the different, the, the ending total reserves at the end of a fiscal year. And um, in between them is the percent of budget. And it shows that because we try to target, you know, minimum 10% of budget. Uh, and we've been, we entered this um, COVID recession, I would say, very, in a very strong position, uh, which is good. Um, you know, you have the challenge where this is one-time money, and, you know, we, we seem to be doing well there, whereas we have challenge on our annual operating recurring budget. Uh, that's a situation between that and the COVID recession and a potential cut of state aid, where I think it did make a lot of sense for fiscal '21 to use some of that reserve funding, rather than putting additional burden uh, beyond what was already in the assessments on, on to taxpayers. Um, we uh, you know, you can see the major buckets in the middle, school choice, stabilization, and undesignedated fund balance, which is our general fund. It turns into excess and deficiency, also known as E N D. And then the far right three columns are the changes from year to year. So I guess what I would like to focus on is the estimate for fiscal '20, which is at the second gray line towards the bottom of the middle, um, which showed that we could be at a very high number of 16%, but you have to back out a whole bunch of stuff that we've talked about first. Um, the $970,000 that has been moved into the stabilization fund. You can see in the middle, very middle here, balance at the end of the year, stabilization typically had numbers of about 150,000, and it was flat. We didn't use it much. And as we started to move more into um, conversations, which we'll get into in the next slide, about um, our long-term multi-year liabilities around facilities, we started to talk about how to have a better multi-year strategy for getting prepared for some of those things. So I'll touch on that in a second. But you can see um, um, the numbers have now spiked up from, you know, a very stable, you know, number of, of around 150, 160,000. We spent it down to um, do a fire alarm upgrade at Essex Elementary, uh, which was necessary because the system was old. Um, but now we're looking at close to a million dollars in stabilization. That money has been uh, coming from interest income that we've earned, it, yeah, almost exactly that amount uh, on bonds. We bonded um, for the Memorial School uh, project, it's a 52 million dollar budget. MSBA, State Grant Authority, uh, is offered to pay up to 12 and a half million. And so 52 million will come, uh, 40 million, one more time, 52 million total minus 12 from MSBA is about 40 million for the taxpayers to be bonded. We bonded 35 million upfront, and so the money as it's being spent down sits in our interest income. So that's where we generated that million dollars. And I think in working through our budget collaboration groups with, with the towns, who um, 100% of our long-term bond costs are paid by the towns outside of the levy limit through a debt exclusion, everyone agreed that it seemed to make sense to, to mark those funds for capital replacement. So that's why we've taken that 970,000 out. We've also, going back to the bottom left corner, taking out 335,000 for the current fiscal '21 budget. So you get the 2.8 million, which is 10.6% going into fiscal '22's budget. So um, you know, while it sounds great when you see where we're at total, um, we, well, I'll show you in a second why we think the million in stabilization is essential, but we're starting to spend some of that money through the operating budget. And as I mentioned, you could put another 335,000 in for fiscal '22 based on where we're at today. And uh, we could be looking from the last slide at um, you know, uh, six hundred thousand uh, to a million dollars of potential need for COVID, depending on how that shakes out and what else comes up from state aid. So let's move um, briefly. Oh, before we get off, there's the only other thing I, I just want to add, I apologize, is that one thing we did when we um, devoted the 335,000 from our reserve funds for the fiscal '21 budget, uh, about 230,000 of that was savings at the end of fiscal '20 last year, just ended June 30th, uh, that we had from the prolonged shutdown of operations from March through June. So knowing that there was going to be some savings there, uh, we made sure to uh, have that be part of what we could uh, contribute to the current year. Um, this year, we're in the exact opposite situ- si- situation. COVID's still here, but we're actually spending a lot more to run our school system. So moving forward, this is a quick look on the next slide about some of the capital needs. This is a slide that we actually presented last January. Um, uh, Jason Waldron, our facilities manager, who's been here for a couple of years, came from Hamilton, Atlanta, uh, worked previously at uh, Harvard University's Athletics uh, Facilities Management. He's been an amazing shot uh, in the arm for our facilities management system. He's been terrific. I mean, first of all, I, I would say, I had no idea going into COVID, just how important it was going to be to have facilities expert at the forefront of everything we do. We were thinking about how to reinvent, you know, teaching and learning, and, and teachers and the principals have, and, and curriculum directors have been amazing about that. But there's been a massive amount of facilities uh, reconfiguration and um, uh, and work to be done. I talked about some of it in my FEMA comments. He's been amazing. So he, he's helped me uh, to put this together in terms of forecasting for the next couple of years. You can see there are 970,000 of reserves, reserve, uh, set aside in the stabilization fund for facility, facilities needs. That's money we really think needs to be there. Um, and uh, you know, these are costs that are going to be coming up more and more uh, in the, in the near term. Some of the years, um, Eagles Nest, we talked about doing that in the summer of 2020. We're now talking about doing that in the spring. Some of these have been, I think, pushed back slightly because of the COVID, um, I would say delay, but they're not going to go away. Uh, and so this just gives you a sense for why it's so important to have money in reserves to help fund our multi-year capital plan. We do have an annual allocation in our operating budget of about $60,000. It's small. It used to be a little bit bigger. It was one of the cuts that we reduced from 100,000 um, to meet a, a budget gap. But we, we haven't gone below that, because we know that just to take care of our existing infrastructure without even replacement, these are really more replacement costs you see here, um, we need that 60,000 desperately. So one thing we've avoided doing uh, has been putting all of our money in our budget into one category and doing terrible deferred maintenance. We've really moved away from that. Excuse me, if anything, we've become much more active in preventative maintenance um, um, with Steve Hunter, uh, amazing maintenance technician, uh, a, a position we funded through outsourcing of some other custodial positions, uh, and Jason Waldron. We really moved toward a much more proactive approach towards spending a little bit more upfront to save more money over time. And I think that's worked out great. We also did, by the way, get uh, kudos from MSBA, getting, you know, one of the highest uh, reimbursement incentive matches, uh, they said they've ever given, because of the fact that we're moving so much more towards uh, preventative maintenance. So that turned into extra reimbursement dollars that we get with the Memorial School Plan. The multi-year budget, so uh, I, this is just for those who are trying to put all the pieces together between the fact that we've got um, an operating budget that relies on, you know, level services spending, that's the top half, and then the bottom half is how we pay for it. We talked about how state aid growth has been anemic, uh, even if we are a little less, worse off, you know, you can see fiscal '21, we assumed the numbers are going from 311 to 29. Uh, even with that going up a little bit, the growth rate, as I mentioned, has been about 2% per year. So that's put a lot of pressure on the town assessments, which are down here in bold. This is a way for us to say, with the level services budget over time and state aid growing below that rate of growth, what would be the impact on town assessments? And to the extent that we have started to introduce reserve funding, which you can see is one of our revenue lines here, um, what happens in, and uh, to that over time, to be able to keep uh, town assessments in the mid-three levels? And I know we talked about the fact that our uh, assessments have been closer to 3.2%, which I'm sure um, the lower the better for taxpayers, we understand that, and we certainly have our budget goal to keep it low. But this approach allows us to see how our spending over time will impact not only um, potentially reserves, but also town assessments. And so uh, this is really just up here to let people know that we don't go into uh, contract negotiations, we don't make a decision about new positions, we don't make a decision about our multi-year structure of our health insurance plan, which also goes through negotiations, um, uh, or even use of reserves or any other type of spending without really understanding how sustainable it is. And so um, you know, I think if you're looking at the number two and a half as a straight number, yet you would see that it costs more than that to run a school system. And that Pam has said in prior years, that, that, that's the number we can hit, it just involves cutting your, your district program. Uh, and if level services is kind of the bare minimum of what you want to offer, when you talk to most business managers, they're going to tell you, typically, school system growth is in the 3.5 to 4% per year. That's kind of normal, unless you're doing things like cutting heads, or um, you know, deferring maintenance, or doing the other types of things that aren't really the hallmark of a high-quality system. And I'm sure there are many other um, community members who might say, to be honest, we'd like you to do more, to invest more. And so that's the trade-off that we need to do, because there's always a list of needs, we have it every year, of program improvements that are needed. And I think everyone can probably agree that what's expected of school systems today is much different than what was expected of school systems maybe 30 or 50 years ago. And so um, but the, the, the capitation on property taxes are there for a reason. And so this is really about how we manage those trade-offs and, and look at the different levels. Is there a next slide?
Yeah, that just brings us to the end.
Yeah, so, you know, every year at this time, we just remind people that we're, we're marching down a timeline where we expect um, through the regional agreement to adopt our budget first week of February, with the final budget hearing at the last uh, Tuesday of January. And so between now and then, we're going to see what we can do to check assumptions and projections, look for other areas of potential savings, uh, collaborate with our partners on the uh, town side, and listen to our principals, as well as community members, about what everybody's expecting, and try to put it all into uh, the management machine, for lack of a better phrase, to, to come up with a budget that can be palatable for everybody.
I just um, make a note that 6:30 will be our typical start to the budget hearing, so we'll update these numbers, uh, these times and put them on our website. And I guess my, my closing comment, and then we'll go to questions, is I think we all share the same frustration. So when Avi lays out the numbers and the multi-year budget, uh, two and a half is always the guidepost, but it, it's also the mechanism that just continues to kick the can down the road, because we do strive for level services, we do commit um, to two and a half, but if we run realistically at three and a half to four, we're just always putting off to a day in the future, a time to reconcile the cuts that are made on the way to, on the way to the override. And I kind of, I, I, I see what we, what we were able to do with the OPEB situation, and maybe that could be a collective goal going forward, is there has to be a better way than um, kind of starving yourself only to gorge yourself on an override, if you, if you'll allow the analogy. It's like, we trim and we trim and we trim for years, and then we go to an override situation just to try to put everything back, which is not a real healthy way to build in continual improvement in growth, because we're always deferring the investments and getting to the next level of performance. So I think it, it's a frustration we all share for different reasons. There's not enough money to go around, we know that, and we're all in on um, making it work for um, the best we can for the taxpayers. But I think we're, I'd be remiss in not saying, to make it work every year, we're always going to be in a situation we, where we're not going to be able to invest uh, the way we need to, and we're going to be forced to make cuts which slowly over time degrade the program. So that being said, are there questions about the high-level numbers that were presented tonight? Well, our process over the next month, we'll, we're going to continue to meet in our collaboration meetings, uh, kind of figure out where we need to land in January and continue to fine-tune numbers, hopefully get more of a sense of what um, the state budgets will be looking like for next year, and whether or not that's going to have any impact on us in a positive or negative way.
Um, yeah, and Pam, can I just, if people want to make, have, if people have a question, are there a lot of people? Just put your name in the chat, and we'll just go through people's names as they come up, since it's a little hard online to manage. I, people must have questions. I'm seeing nothing, but I'm sure- I'm seeing nothing, but I'm sure people have questions. We got nothing.
I sent a question.
Ben and Maury both have questions and I think I hear Sarah.
Okay.
Well, I'll just lead off here and this may be too open-ended a question, but I just figured I'd ask, what exactly is the enrollment trend looking like? I know in past years you've had kind of multi-year, you know, illustrations of the enrollment numbers and my understanding is that we're going to have some sort of bigger class sizes rolling off. And I'm wondering, it looks like the teacher count has been relatively flat. And so I'm just wondering how you keep those sort of in parity, how you think about the parity between multi-year enrollment trends and teachers? Because, well, I'll just stop there.
I don't mind grabbing that one. I'm looking to see if I have handy our enrollment slide and I don't think I do. But yes, over the past few years, we've been talking about a downward trend in enrollment at the elementary level while the large bubble classes continue to roll through the secondary. What we did as a regional study last year with the superintendent's group was looking at how to answer that question because we all get it. And what we're seeing over time is while yes, there's a decline in the general population, there's a shift in cost centers from general ed to special ed. So while you may be able to reduce a classroom teacher due to enrollment, you're typically needing to hire additional staffing to support interventions, psychological services, ELL and/or special education services. So we went through and looked at how over time budgets have stayed, budget growth has stayed relatively the same, even though you may be experiencing some enrollment decline. I'm happy to dig out those slides and share them with you, Ben, but it's pretty dramatic, which is why I was asking Avi to highlight a couple of the issues around special education. Student services in general, not just special education, is consuming a larger and larger portion of the budget. They tend to be more expensive services and our budget hasn't grown and state funding hasn't grown to accommodate that number. It's really just shifting from one area to another and kind of robbing Peter to pay Paul with your general budget. In general, we have reduced staffing in the general ed classrooms over time as enrollment has declined. It hasn't been obvious because we've accomplished most of it through attrition, so not replacing retirees, reorganizing staff to work between buildings, particularly at the elementary, for example, with a couple of retirements, we were able to have specialists split time 60-40 between Memorial and Essex rather than replacing a full STE.
That's helpful. I have a couple of other questions, but I'm going to step away and let other people ask and if there's time at the end, I'll follow up. Thank you.
The only brief thing I would add to that, I think when we go back to the budget goals, you know, we talked already for a couple of years now about managing not just enrollment, but growth in student needs. And so I think we've definitely seen, and I think that's kind of what Pam was talking about, but student needs have certainly changed and as I mentioned, what's expected of a school system has as well. So these aren't like just things that, they're expectations of school systems. Let's just leave it at that and things that we need to deliver and all school systems need to deliver. So, you know, it's not just number, but also the makeup of what students need to essentially to access the curriculum.
Can I just add on to your all answers too? I think that with the beautiful new Memorial School that's been built, we might see some additional move-in students as well. I think we've seen that in the past when we have a brand-new building, people get excited and want to move to town.
That's, I miss my friend Caroline. We have always said in the last eight years, if you build it, they will come. And we saw that with Memorial. And I also think that Avi and Pam brought up a really good point with student services. If you build that, they will come. So I think that the reputation that we carry for excellent, excellent services on the special ed side, not the general, also the general ed, but I'm specifically talking about special ed, excellent reputation, you build it, they will come. And so we've seen that over the last few years.
I know other people have questions. I see Michael Flynn put his name in the chat. So do we want to go to Michael next?
Hello, everyone. Thank you for the time and the very, very well put-together information today. My question, and it picks up on a theme from when Pam and Avi were briefing the Essex Finance Committee, is, you know, I think the presentation was excellent and I firmly come from the school of thought where you do budget reserves, you don't get into crisis situations for these large, large costs. But I guess my question is, and it's more of a comment and question, you know, the first part of the presentation was we talked about all those extraordinary, you know, costs associated with COVID and the uncertainty. But, you know, this is an extraordinary year. Would this be a year where we reduce, further manage down some of these reserves such that we can further manage the percentage increase, the budget for the year? I hate to call it a one-time situation, but this is truly an unprecedented time in our history with the COVID. So Avi, Pam, if you could pick up on that reserve comment, that reserve question? And again, my long-term philosophy is one of long-term budgeting, long-term accruals. But could we touch on that a little bit?
I mean, I can touch on it, but it's just from the mathematical sense. I think Pam's usually got a good sense of it from a kind of organizational management. And if you go back to the multi-year budget slide, if you have abilities to control slides. So first, I think Pam will tell you that we always start with the same philosophy of good financial management is about saving rainy day funds for rainy days. And so we've striven to do that. And that is the right past tense of the word strive. But anyway, and then on top of it, you know, there are times where things do get extraordinary. And so I would say this is an extraordinary time, certainly for the COVID costs, it makes sense. And when we've had a couple of years where the percentage of reserves have grown, that's another reason why it makes sense. The challenge that I think we need to address, and I think, and I've been with the district for a number of years now, and when we first kind of took on this philosophical issue of, I think the two strategic things that we've attempted to do working together on the budget, Pam and me, since we've been here for about 10 years now, is one, to try to have a multi-year sustainable spending strategy that encompasses the whole budget. And two, to incorporate use of reserves into that. So I think we have moved in that philosophical direction that you're exactly talking about. And so now the question is, to your point, when are there exceptions? And so certainly, so I feel good that we have set our district to be strategically sound in how we do things. And like you said, so is it a time where we consider use of reserves? Is this the time where we consider maybe using some of the OPEB funds for retiree healthcare? Because that's what it's there for, as an example. It's another form of a reserve. We don't count it there because it's in a trust. But the one question that we all need to answer and what I tend to like to flag for the partnership, not just of school committee, but also the town, the answer is, what you put in there, it's in there until you cut something or until you agree to a multi-year strategy to replace it with alternative funding. So what we did when we first moved to this strategic philosophy was to say, hey, we can do this for a while and as long as we're not spending the reserves, no problem. Because maybe, you know, we might have savings that roughly offsets what we put into the budget and then no harm, no foul, we don't spend them, just there. And that way we don't have to tax all the way up to a higher rate. We've got a little bit of conservatism in the budget. If we have savings at the end of the year, the reserves don't get spent and we didn't have to tax too high. So we eventually started to see we were spending the reserves and that money was getting used. And that's when we said, we think we need to kind of move away from that. And that led to a fiscal '16 revenue correction where we took a couple of years to get there. We let everyone know it was coming and we said, okay, we're going to try to move away from that. So I think if we were to do a one-year, this is a long way to say, if we were to go towards a one-year, a multi-year change, I think you can't do it without having an exit strategy. And we can't exit without doing that in partnership with school committee and the town funding organizations. So I would just love to collaborate on that, but, you know, it certainly is an option for short-term if we have a long-term picture in mind. And hopefully that long-term picture is not gut the district in terms of spending.
And I agree philosophically. You put away a little bit every year for those big expenses, you know, like your facility manager, you know, that's how, you know, Harvard budgets for 50 years for some of the facilities maintenance. That being said, I've just heard so many painful lost job stories, difficult situation stories around town driven by COVID. In addition to the added COVID expenses, I would strongly ask, is this a year where we consider that, I hate to say it, one-time, one-time sort of exception to this long-term reserve rule? So again, thank you for that answer. And again, I am conflicted personally, philosophically about this, but I just thought it needs to be asked. So many people around town are struggling, struggling in this economy, in this situation, both personally, professionally, health-wise. So again, I just thought it was important for you to just flag up and be granular and point to a specific policy and area to talk about. So thank you for the answer and thank you for the good work behind it.
Thanks, Michael. Greg Fattersfield is next on the list.
Greg, I don't know if you're muted.
You can see your mute coming on and off and you probably also know that we can't hear you. So something might be working improperly, I'm sorry to say.
Yeah, I'm seeing live mic as well. Maybe go to the next person and we'll.
Yeah, let's go ahead to Mark Renzi has a question and then maybe we can come back to Greg if he can get a sound working. Go ahead, Mark. Mark, did you want to ask your question out loud? It's in the chat. He has a question about the percentage of school budget relative to the total budget for the town.
I mean, I see Mark there. His line is still muted. Oh, he just unmuted. Nope, he's muted. Well, I would just say that that's a question that we typically, we could provide our information and we would compare it to the town's information. That's the information we get from the towns. Oh, and maybe he's, he's still muted. So we can work with.
Does that work now?
He's open. Yeah, we can hear you.
Hey, I'm sorry. I think I double muted. I muted the computer and I muted the phone. So thank you. So I think, I think, yeah, look, you know, look, I think, I think understanding things on a relative basis. And I think as we, we think about school budgets and the percentage increase and consistent increase over year, and I'm looking at, I think, this same spreadsheet that's laid out here. The problem of understanding these budgets is the relative basis of them. And I think when we hear that the budget is greater than 50% of the taxes of Essex, I'm not, I'm not sure if that's, that's 100% true. That's one. And just understanding, understanding that is important because I think what we're having problems with is that we're having a little bit of adverse selection. But as, as the school budget continues to increase, we're forced to decrease spending in other areas for, for the towns respectively. And I can speak better to Essex than I can speak to Manchester, but I've heard through some of the finance members in Manchester that there's similar concerns of that. And so if the growth rate of the school budget increases at a greater percentage rate than everything else and other things will have to start to decline because it's, unless we're going to have growing housing in the towns, it gets tougher. And I'm not sure, the appraisals are certainly up and we're all reading the housing news that people are moving to the suburbs. But I think it's just a general overall concern. And I think if, understanding that and having the data makes it easier to make decisions, at least from, from my standpoint. But that's the general genesis of the question.
So I guess I just, I can't speak to the specific numbers. We need Brendan and Greg to give us the percentage breakdown. I can just offer anecdotally that for the 25-plus years I've been doing this, it, schools have solidly been, whether it's this district, I worked in North Reading and Andover, 60% plus of a dis, of a town budget. It is going to be, it is the largest cost center in just about any town. I'll exclude cities. I don't have a lot of knowledge about cities, but suburban towns that are tax-dependent with low industry, it's an ongoing battle and it does consume the largest portion of any, just about any town's budget. That being said, I think the conversation locally and statewide really needs to shift from cutting costs. I think they need to be managed. I think we need to be conservative and I think that's our track record. But it's an ongoing problem of not enough revenue for the needs of the community. So I think that was the conversation that was happening in the 2019, the spring of 2019 around the recalibration of the Chapter 70 formula because there's just not enough financial support coming into schools at the state level. It's pushing the responsibility to the local level and most localities similar to ours don't have enough to make it work. So I think we spend a lot of time locally, going back and forth over whether or not it's sustainable, where many of the services that we offer are mandated and those are the services that are increasing the budget at a significant rate. We can look at personnel, that will always consume a large part of our conversation. But I think our energy is better spent in trying to figure out how we can come up with a better multi-year budgeting process and increase revenue. Because I think we're always going to be in this position.
Sarah, I think that's, that's fine, but I will tell you, when you walk down the street of Essex and/or Manchester, that it's a holistic view and the people that don't dedicate their time say the mill rate in Essex is up 20% over the past three years. And so that's not just because of the school budget, that's because they've, the citizens of Essex have elected to have a fire station and a police station that's new and also have elected to vote for a new facility for Manchester Elementary. So when you look at it holistically, it's not just the school budget, it's all these other things that people have voted for. But now I think as you, you know, you think about where the budgets are going to be on a year-over-year basis, you've got those compounding effects and then you're faced with, you know, potential economic repercussions in a, in a much broader context, but then increasing the mill rate because you have to increase, increase the budget for the schools. So I mean, I'm not, I'm not downplaying that there's some more technicalities to it, but holistically, the mill rate's going to go up. And if, if assessed values go down and/or we face a really difficult economic environment and I'm, I'm in finance and I can tell you, dealing with it day in, day out, that that's what we're faced with. And it's, and I'm worried that when we get into positions like this where it may be a very well, well-run process to come up with the numbers that are before us, that holistically, you've. that holistically, you've got some issues that we're going to be dealing with that if we're not cautious, we're going to be making harder decisions. And that, that's, that's where, you know, as I, I speak to many families here, that's where I'm concerned about it. And I, I recognize that we're all in a conundrum where the state funding is, it seems to be dropping. I'm sure you guys can speak to that better. And then you're pushing it more to the local. I, I just take that on face value. I can't speak to that one way or another. But, but if that's the issue, then we've got, we've got to make some harder decisions because I think of, of the prior points that I just made.
Sure.
Can we have a clarification from Pam and Avi? That we're, we're intending to work within the two and a half levy limit. So we understand all of these concerns and we are committed to staying within two and a half.
Absolutely.
All right. So, Mark, thanks. Answered by Pam, I'm sorry, that was.
Yeah, just, can you hear me okay? I just put on a headset. So I just want to add one quick thing. I think we're talking about revenue and we're talking about costs and I think they're both important. On the, on the revenue side, I just think because, Mark, you made a comment about this. I agree with you. We spend a lot of time looking at the state aid funding formulas. We are, budget is about eighty-five percent funded by taxpayers due to state aid formulas for school systems. And I just want to ensure everyone is aware of the fact that these conversations are ongoing about state funding. All of that aside, it doesn't address your other points about spending, which are duly noted and I think very important. On, on the revenue side, however, as the state is looking at a multi-year phase-in of the SOA Student Opportunity Act, which is because so many other communities are saying the same thing about, you know, insufficient revenue to keep pace with what is expected of school systems. This is not just a Manchester and Essex thing. So the state has definitely acknowledged that to some degree and moved forward in that direction after really years of saying it was not acknowledging the cost of mandates and health insurance or mandates in special ed, for example. That's kind of hanging out there. I think it's really important for us to work with our local legislators to tell them how important that funding is. I think the other thing is that there's always a battle between different districts. And one of the other things that I brought to school committee, and I just think it's good since we have an audience here tonight for everyone to be aware of is there are always districts out there that are hoping to grab a larger piece of the pie to say, you know, Manchester and Essex, because we're, you know, with eighty, thirteen percent coming from state funding and other sources, they must be wealthy, they can handle it. And, you know, there's some other communities out there that want to have the state lower its contribution to our group, to our community, which would put a greater burden on the towns, which I think would be unfair, inappropriate, especially because we're trying to deliver a high-quality education. You know, you can't be saying that Massachusetts ranks among the, you know, greatest countries in education on the one side, but also be taking the funding away. But it would also, if that did come to pass, and it's, it's not like a doomsday scenario that's about to happen, but it's discussions that are out there that I think people in the community need to be aware of and to advocate for, we would be in a situation which could exacerbate the situation and call back to your point about spending as well. So, and I don't want to just focus on the revenue and understand a lot of your point is about spending. It's duly noted. But those are things that I think our community needs to be aware of. We're certainly working with our legislators about it. But I think that is something that I hope, you know, the towns support in their conversations with legislators too, about how important it is to move forward with SOA, but also to not kind of rob one group to pay another.
And I just, one more thing before we leave this topic. I think what the SOA taught us and what I was inartfully trying to say earlier is that what COVID is showing the state and hopefully showing even members of our own community is that what schools are as a function has grown in size over the past twenty years. We are not just an academic preparation house. We are social services. We are psychological services. We are health services. And the schools have taken on all of these pieces and expanded our service provision without budgets growing commensurately. So we're using the same base budget formula, whether local or state, to try and do, I would say, twenty-five percent more than we did before. So the budgets are going to continue to grow faster because we're doing more things. And if you listen to the current conversation, it's going to be coming from the D E S C next week. You've been hearing pediatricians talking about it. There's a growing awareness of the mental health crisis among our youth, not necessarily in high numbers in our two communities, but in general. And I think with schools not operating at full force right now, others are seeing what we have been working on and working with for several years now. So I, I just think we've been trying to communicate to as many people as will listen is that what schools are, are different now than they were twenty years ago. And we've picked up, picked up the slack for a lot of cuts at the state level in social services, family services and child services. And they found their way into the schools. So when they went to recalculate SOA, high-needs districts are deserving of the money that they're getting and they do need more money because they have higher needs. Our, our need is lower, so we're going to get less of the distribution, but it can't be cut any lower than it is. And it still needs to be grown, not necessarily to have more chapter seventy for general education funding, but specialized chapter seventy dollars to support all of the additional services that schools have taken on.
Pam, can I say one thing in follow-up to that? I think it's also important to note that while we don't see on a relative basis, you know, the, the kind of needs that some of the other larger communities do, we are going to see some significant needs. Our, our students are going to have some significant needs on the backend of COVID.
Absolutely.
And I think it's important to keep that in mind.
All right. So Nina's been waiting patiently and then Guy is waiting after Nina. So Nina, hi.
Thank you. If you can hear me okay, I'm having trouble with my video, so I apologize. I guess switching just to the future costs, I did see the medium priorities of the turf fields needing to be replaced, one being Highland Field, one being Brook Street. I guess I just want clarity because Brook Street Field, I always thought was the town of Manchester's field. Or if not, is the school getting the rental money from it, or the district, I should say, because obviously that field is used for a lot of purposes. The town of Essex doesn't even have a field. What's at Essex Elementary floods with the smallest sprinkle. And I know a turf only has a lifespan of eight to ten years at moderate use. So I guess I just, I'm kind of curious about that. But those two fields are going to cost us a million dollars. That just seems like a lot of money.
Yeah, everything you said is accurate. So, yes, that's about, you know, that's a rough estimate of how much it might cost. And yes, you are correct that the Brook Street Field is, it's actually a joint, it's a jointly run and operated field. So it is in the, anything in the town of Essex that's property is through our Essex lease agreement. Anything in Manchester is through our Manchester lease agreement. So we have responsibility to maintain Brook Street Field. However, the rental funds, as you correctly point out, do go to the town of Manchester and there is a cost allocation formula in the lease agreement to proportionally share the cost based upon use. So I don't believe that the entire five hundred thousand dollars would be entirely a district obligation. But this is what the cost is and it's an asset that we're required to maintain. So that's why it's on here. So the actual, when you start to look at a revenue picture to match this cost picture, you're correct that there could be a revenue offset there.
Okay, thanks. I guess I would say this is a quick add-on because I think as, you know, a parent who's had kids play at Brook Street and certainly it's an easy field to get to, does continue that sort of, I guess, the paradigm where Essex always feels they're kind of at the short end of things because we have nowhere. And I, I'll just put it out there. I know Manchester families don't always want to have to commute to Essex for, but if we had the appropriate facilities, then maybe it could balance out, creating that better community cohesion between the two towns. So just to put it out there, but that's, you know, again, that's a lot of money.
Yep, and just a quick background on that, which you may know, but for others on the call who may not. Both of those fields were funded through the middle school, high school construction project. That's where the money came to put them out there. But as you said, it is quite a bit of money to maintain them. And so, you know, one of the things that we haven't talked about tonight, but we have talked about in many of our other presentations around big-ticket capital, and I'm talking bigger than the slide here, which is the buildings, is, you know, the future of Essex Elementary. And, you know, obviously we're putting a big investment into the playground this year, which is significant cost. That'll be around three hundred thousand dollars, maybe a little bit more. But to the extent that the eventual, oh, thank you Pam for putting this up. We, to the extent that eventual replacement of the building, it's going to need to happen. It's, you know, you know, that's where some of those community needs that can also benefit the district could come into play, whether they happen simultaneously. Obviously, the MSBA wants us to have something that fits our program. But if there's something that fits our program, that fits into that project grade, if it's simultaneous, great. But I think that's a great time to be talking about that. And what Pam's just showing here is that when we looked into the, and I'll be very brief on this. When we looked into the analysis of what to do with the memorial school, we talked about, again, focusing on a multi-year process. We don't want to just say, oh, we need a new school and we'll figure out everything later. You know, the obvious question is, well, what happens with the debt you're already paying for the high school? What happens with Essex Elementary? So we did a whole set of public meetings and analyses around how to incorporate Essex Elementary into the funding scenario for a multi-year plan improvement. And so what we talked about was, basically, we're two options. One, where you replace it immediately after the memorial project is done, which is certainly an option. MSBA will not provide matching funds for more than one program at a time. So you need to wait for that to finish. And typically, they take about a year and a half to two years to close after construction is done for various bureaucratic reasons. So, and we expect the project to be done in about a year. So that's the fast-track approach. The, the longer approach that might be more cost-effective for taxpayers is to wait until the middle school, high school debt rolls off. So you're paying for two buildings at a time instead of three. And that would require a six-year delay. So all of these kind of play into some of the questions that you're asking about, Nina. But I think you're spot on in terms of the cost and the uses for the community.
All right. Guy's been waiting really patiently and then we'll have Guy, then back to Greg because I think Greg got his next one to work.
Okay, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
So I want to go back to personnel costs and actually talk about going forward, the contract negotiations that are going to be coming up. And I guess I have three questions. The first is, it looks to me as though in the current contract, this year and the previous year, the COLA increase was two and a half percent. Was, is that part of, is that, is that baked in at two and a half percent? Is that part of the contract negotiation? Or is that set from some, some, a number that, that comes up?
No, it's contractual and committed to for the three-year term.
And was that the, and it looked as though from previous years, it wasn't that high. Is that correct?
Correct. I would say from about, from twenty-ten through the beginning of the last contract, I want to say the average ran between one and a half and two percent.
Right, okay. So I would just comment that that's obviously a very, very important number that, that, that needs to be, you know, watched over carefully in the, in the contract negotiations. So the second, I'm glad you have these two charts up because they're the other way big drivers of, of that four percent or whatever that personnel cost increase that we've been experiencing in the past several years is number one, the time and grade kind of step chart, which goes down the left side of that, of the chart on the left. And then the second is the, the highest, highest level of education achieved, which runs across the top with the bachelor's, masters and so forth. I tried to look, I tried to look at comparable numbers within the state and, and within, and, and actually in neighboring states. And in both cases, it appeared to me, and I'll, I guess I'll talk about the, the time and grade one first. As, as a, as a faculty, we have teachers who have a pretty much, a much higher level of experience than, than other, than, than average teachers in, in, in other states. Is that accurate?
I wouldn't compare state to state because I think you have to take into consideration the cost of living in the particular region of the state that you're looking at. So I wouldn't compare it to New Hampshire.
Well, I wasn't. I was comparing it to New York and Connecticut and, 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 well.
Yeah, so, great. I think three things we know go into the formula. There's the salary. Then there's the healthcare package and the impact on the salary. There's the pension.
Aye.
In terms of the percentage out into the pension plan. And I lost my train of thought on the other thing we always look at. Shoot, oh, well, it's gone. So I haven't done any study on New York, Connecticut or other states. I, we can show you where we do rank within Massachusetts. And this, yeah, these are collaborative bargaining competitors. So I think Massachusetts in general is, you know, a well-paying state. However, I don't have a base of comparison to those other areas.
Right. If you look, and it seemed to me, if, and if I, if I'm correct, if I looked at our average salary across the state, we are, we are slowly, we are slowly moving ourselves up the rank from less to more, a higher level. Is that, is that accurate?
That could also be a function of the age of your staff.
Exactly, exactly. And that, I guess, well, the age and the experience. It's not, it's not just the, it's the combination of the two things.
The combination.
Experience and the highest degree attained. When I looked on the, on the, at, at other states again, for, I was able to find a chart, which by state showed the number of teachers who, who had less than a, who had a bachelor's degree, a master's degree and greater than a master's degree. And I looked at the same states and I was amazed, comparing it to our chart, that we have, we have such a high percentage of faculty with greater than a master's degree, which moves them to the right in that chart and obviously is a, is a factor in, 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 you know, the salary level.
Can I speak to this?
Yes.
This is Annie. I think what we've found is that people like working here, people stay here. And I think the experience that we see in our staff results in the, in the good scores that we have and the excellence of our district. So, you know, yeah, they're more expensive, but I, I don't, I mean, what are our options? Do we fire people?
I have a question, Annie. No, 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 I'm not suggesting that we fire. I'm curious though as to how this chart works or, or how, how we came to spot in the chart. Because if, if, if the charge, if from the chart, it's, it determines, you know, what, you know, what portion of salary devoted to these higher levels, how did, how do we come to this, this calculation?
Guy, you're asking.
Guy, you're asking if it's by design, I think, right? Versus, uh, it, it, or, you know, by what degree of calculus?
And I think in the past couple of years, we've actually made a move to hire folks to the left of that, um, chart. So, right?
Yeah, yeah. I have a very, my answer is very straightforward. This chart, this structure is, it, it predates my entrance into education. I mean, this is the chart that's existed since the first day I joined the teacher corps. And it hasn't changed too dramatically since then. It's always been a combination of steps in columns encouraging attainment of higher-level degree. Um, we don't pay anything toward people getting degree. We don't pay course reimbursement. We're an educational institution, but we don't support people financially to go out and get a higher-level degree unless they're out of bachelor's, because by, uh, certification guidelines, they have to earn a master's to stay in, um, to, to retain, uh, certification and continue in the teaching corps. So this is, you know, it's collaborative bargaining is our process. This is, you can find a chart like this in almost any teacher, uh, contract in the state. So we're really trying to take on, um, an embedded historic way of compensating teachers, which is a combined, um, a combined calculation between experience and, uh, degree of attainment, uh, educational attainment. And that's all it is. Uh, we've worked, we've thrown out ideas of how we can compact the scale. So some scales may have only ten steps, some may have twenty, some may have five, but basically, when you go to make those moves, you're truly just compacting everything on there into shorter steps. So people will go from the top, um, from the beginning to the end in, in, in quicker form. Um, a couple of schools that have been gone into receivership, which have, um, required that they make changes, have gone to more of a four-step approach. We don't have that leverage here. Um, so I think when you take on changing the way the compensation structure exists, it's a com- it, it's two things. It's working with your local to try to come up with some creative and innovative ideas, but then also knowing that what the local does is going to reflect statewide and that they're part of a larger teacher organization that has, um, I don't want to use judgmental words, but they are, they support the system that's in place now. So we can't unilaterally change how pay is distributed. We, what we can do is collectively bargain with the cost of living increase is annually or...
So, yeah.
...on those lines.
Listen...
Whatever changes are made have to be voted on by the Teachers Association. So if you reduce...
Right.
...pay in the columns, it's highly unlikely you're going to get a passing vote.
Right.
And that will...
Uh, listen, I'm not...
I mean, our Teachers Association have taken ones and zeros in years when we have had very difficult financial situations and had to lay people off. And to slow the growth of the grid, they agreed to, um, a percent increase or no increase that wasn't in their personal financial interest to try and save jobs for other people. So the years prior to the two and a half were historically low compared to the, the three percent they typically got prior to 2010, is my understanding.
But Pam, um, this is Mark. I mean, it's not like we don't have leverage on negotiating. I mean, I think, like, if we can't take, we can't take the, I, I don't think you are, but we can't take an approach where we don't have leverage. We have leverage in the way we negotiate.
Absolutely, Mark. And what we've done in the past ten years is reorganize their healthcare three times and cost shifted to the employee. So you can't both increase their cost of healthcare and decrease their salary and, and expect to get, uh, a sup- a, a vote of support.
Right.
Um, I think we went through extensively what we were able to do, um, with the OPEB restructuring, and that was set as a collective goal between, uh, the two towns and the school. That that was a priority.
Okay, did Guy have, um, another part to his question, or was that it?
No, I, I just, I just want to say, finally, I'm, I'm, I'm not suggesting that, you know, we don't appreciate, you know, uh, uh, continuing education and, and, and experience and, and so forth and so on. But what I'm saying is that when you have a town budget where sixty percent of the town budget comes from the school, and a school budget where sixty-seven percent of it comes from personnel costs, and you're trying to ratchet three and a half percent down to two and a half percent, you have to, you have to rationalize where, 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 where it is. And, and that's all I'm saying. And, and so I think, I, I, I would, obviously, uh, I don't envy any, you know, envy the negotiation process for the contract, but it seems to me that, you know, practically speaking, that's where, that's where we, you know, that's an important place to look.
I think we're missing another, not to belabor this, but I, I under- my concern is that we're over-focusing on the compensation grid and not taking a historic perspective on the healthcare, um, history that's taken place over the past ten years. So as Avi pointed out, we do use a multi-year budget and build a contract that's sustainable over time. What we didn't know when we were building the contract is that we were going to take an after-budget, um, extraordinary hit to healthcare, which landed us with, what was the final percentage increase in that year?
Twenty-four.
Okay.
Yeah, about twenty, twenty-two, I think.
Which absor- go ahead, Avi.
Worse.
Twenty-eight percent. So a twenty-eight percent increase to healthcare in one year basically handicapped us to do anything in the out-years, because that, the twenty-eight percent increase doesn't go away. It reoccurs year over year. So we took that increase and managed all of our other obligations on top of that without any impact to the towns. So I, I, my concern is we're hyper-focusing on something that we've historically managed within the bounds of our budget without taking into account the other factors.
Mark, as the Chair of the School Committee, I'm going to ask you to not speak until you're recognized, and right now, it's Guy's turn, and Pam's responding to Guy. Thank you.
That's all. And I think maybe we could do another session with the Essex FinCom, so we can brief them more on some of that history and, and the, the impact of that twenty-eight percent.
Yeah, uh, this is Guy. I, I appreciate that, and I, I readily admit that, you know, I, I, I don't know the history on the, on the medical cost as, as well as I should, and it's obviously another component in the, in, in the whole thing. So I'd love to, I'd love to get a better understanding of that.
And, and this is Sarah Melo, Chair of the Manchester FinCom, and I've been on the list, um, having troubles being recognized.
I'm so sorry, I didn't see your name there in the chat.
It's, it's, I was like the second person on the chat.
Oh, my gosh. That's terrible. Okay. So, um, if Guy's all finished, then we need to hear...
Yes.
I am finished.
Okay, awesome. Um, Sarah, can we have Greg first and then come back to you? Is that okay?
I'm good with that.
Okay, thank you. So Greg.
Do you, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
All right, sorry about the troubles before. Anyways, thank you for all this detailed information and, and conversations. Um, I just wanted to understand a little bit more about the reserves, so if it looks like you will draw down that reserve by a million or more this current year? Is that what we're anticipating with COVID?
I, I think a million is a good, uh, estimate at this point, barring any future understanding of what could happen with CARES, um, or even any, um, you know, our four-hundred-thousand-dollar number is just money that's directly allocated to the regional school district through the CARES Act. There are some funds that, um, go directly to the towns, and if we are now a regional school district, a lot of, a lot of those funds often, uh, go to the schools, but in this case, you know, it's just, it's just a different structure. So, but for now, a million dollars, I think, is a reasonable estimate.
So that's not showing in this chart that's on the, on the screen right now?
That's correct. That's correct, because the, this is through fiscal twenty, uh, and, um, we're kind of still figuring out exactly what's happened. But you're exactly right.
Right. So then, then when you look at your long-term projections and you have a, a desire to perhaps use reserves on an annual basis upwards of a half a million a year, um, we're not going to have much reserve to make that last.
Yeah, that's right. So if you take the two-point-eight down to, let's just say, one-point-eight, then you go back to the multi, multi-year budget, you know, uh, scenario, you could be talking about three to four years of reserves before they're gone, and certainly would never, eh, spend them until they're gone. And that would exclude the stabilization money, uh, so we can handle some of our capital needs. But yes, yes, that's, this is, you are, uh, explaining probably much better than I did how COVID reserves as a revenue source in your operating budget and, um, the multi-budgeting concept all come together. So, yes, I agree.
So I, I understand the challenges that we all face with, and, and difficulty of asking taxpayers to dip into their pocket, um, you know, deeper, um, for, for needs, but this, this will be a major impact on the budget long-term, and it may be a good rationale for an override. And I don't know what your thoughts are in terms of when the next override needs to be put on the table, but it's, uh, it's probably coming sooner rather than later, particularly what, given what has happened this year.
The only thing I can just speak, looking backwards instead of looking forwards, is that we had a revenue correction, um, in two thousand sixteen. It had been ten years since, uh, an override had happened before that. And so right now, we're working on the fiscal twenty-two budget. We don't need one there. Um, so that brings us out to seven years if we, you know, should be talking about next year. So, you know, uh, you know, I would say you're in the seven to ten, you know, the seven to ten range seems appropriate. I think going to some of the comments that I, we've been hearing on this call, right now, um, that, you know, the impact of the economic downturn on taxpayers is significant. And I think...
Right.
That's why we're talking about this year's budget, you know, not even considering that. Um, and even with that, we're hearing loud and clear from tonight's meeting that even the budget we have is going to have an impact on taxpayers, that we don't want to, um, minimize, uh, that, you know, the, the challenge that presents. So I think the whole purpose of tonight, um, is really to kind of look at where we're at, what's happening with this one-time situation with COVID, what we have going into the downturn through, um, I'd say, being in a strong financial position, and trying to plan out the next two to four years, uh, and how that looks. And so this is, this is a group of people that we need, uh, to help us, and this is exactly what public hearings are all about.
Yeah. So, and in ideal world, do you like to hang on for a couple, three years before we see that override?
Yeah, I think before everything happened, we were starting to talk about maybe twenty-four being necessary, um, in terms of shortening the timeline, again, because I, I see some comments about the twenty-eight percent. That insurance hit really did require us to shift things in the budget to cover healthcare costs, and I feel like it shortened our timeline quite a bit. But I think this is good, good food for thought about how to strategize for the next few years.
So, so having said all of that, uh, at the risk of being accused of putting on a different hat, so, um, you know, our preliminary budget was distributed to folks Monday, and, um, I, I showed a three-point-four percent increase for, for Manchester's assessment to the district. And, and that's using up basically all of our, our dollars, I mean, it's a balanced budget that I presented, but it relies on a two-and-a-half percent tax increase, um, to get there. So a three-point-four percent increase from Manchester, it's just over five-hundred-thousand dollars more to you, um, to the district. It's a, a little over half of our new revenues that we're anticipating. So that's, like I said, I'm sort of putting up, putting on my other hat and saying, um, it's going to be a stretch for us to even get to the three-seven-five.
It's helpful to hear where you're at as your budget develops, and, you know, every year, this is a process where we all kind of, um, work together and try to, you know, sharpen the pencils as best we can, but also try to figure out what we need to do and how, you know, as we said in the past, how far we can go, how far we can't. But it's very helpful to hear those estimates. And my math mind will get to work on understanding what that means for us as well. Thank you.
All right. Um, Greg, can we hear from Sarah now? Are you, did you get your...
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Sarah, thank you for waiting so patiently. Sorry about that.
No problem. I have two questions. One is, as our school population has decreased, why can our costs decrease? And the second question is, what are your concerns if a forty-B is built in Manchester?
So in terms of cost cuts, I mean, Pam, uh, did you want to...
I, I, I think I have a slide that's going to help a little bit with, um, why the enrollment doesn't do what we want it to do. So I'm going to try to take a second to fish that out. Um, while I'm doing that, I would say on the forty-B issue, um, I think our concern is just, um, en- enrollment and having a ballpark number, I think they said thirty-five students, but not knowing, thirty-five students evenly distributed among all grade levels won't be a problem. Thirty-five students at the fourth and fifth grade level in Manchester could cause a problem, but I think our facility is going to be large enough to absorb it. We'll need teachers. It's going to, it's going to come right back to the conversation we were just having, and where Avi started the budget presentation, which is, we are, we are a people organization. So when we have more students, we need more staff. Um, and the type of students we have and the needs that they present will determine what kind of staff and what level of staff we need. So, um, it could bring increased costs for increased staffing.
Pam, as you bring up that next slide too, could you also, we have cut a number of full-time employee positions over the last few years. Do you have that number in the back of your head?
I don't have it handy, no.
Okay.
Sorry. We, I, I might be able to find it. Let me try with this slide first, because it, it gives a little bit of an answer to the cost shifting that's going on. So we, if, Avi, I know I cut you off. If you wanted to jump in on anything, please.
Well, yeah, the, sorry, I may have a few thoughts. The only other thing I'd add very briefly is just that, um, what we've seen, uh, initially is, even though there's been a decrease in revenue, there has been a, a sort of a bubble of student growth that started in the elementary grades, has been working its way through the middle school and high school. And so, um, we have, in some cases, been able to reduce some of the staffing levels at the younger grades in support of moving positions into the higher grades. Um, and the distribution is also a factor, as Pam said, you know, if you have that declining enrollment happen in one neat place, then yes, it's very easy. Uh, we don't, we don't have a class somewhere with six students in it, so it would be very easy if that happened to just deal with that. But when you have those enrollment declines that are kind of more distributed, it's a little harder. And then the other thing is just some of the more obvious areas of cost growth that are not people-related, that we've talked about, um, health insurance being, um, the most obvious, um, but also some of the added district costs as well. I mean, overall, for example, uh, our, the number of students we have in added district placements is much lower than it used to be, but the costs of the ones that have gone out on average have been growing much higher.
So a couple of years back, like I said, uh, the North Shore Roundtable, which is the superintendent's group on the North Shore, got together, um, some data from the towns that, uh, are represented by this group, and here's an example, um, to give you a sense of who's included in here. So we, oh, it doesn't want to, it does not want to show.
Don't see any...
No, so I can, I'll give you a rundown. So you have everything from Amesbury, Newburyport, down to, uh, Revere and Saugus, uh, including, um, Hamilton, Wenham, uh, Rockport, Gloucester. So we pulled our data and we came up with a, to kind of show the picture of what's been happening to costs over time. And, because we always get the question, when enrollment goes down, why can't your costs go down? So what this shows in the fictional, fictional North Shore town made up of, you know, all of our data, is that... is that over the lifetime of, of a student going through K-12, so 2006 to 2019, you can see that even though enrollment went down, what has gone up and what continues to crowd out some of the general, general funding is the, the increased costs in special services. So whether it's out-of-district sped tuition, out-of-district sped transportation, that's crowding out components of the budget. So this just looked at services. This set aside health insurance because health insurance is, is dealt differently whether you're a regional or a municipality. So even though our student enrollment may be going down overall, the cost of running special population programming is going up twice as fast as general fund spending. And this just gives you a sense of how the costs have shifted from general ed. So yes, when enrollment goes down, we do take cuts to general ed, teaching population, but we have not been able to cut commensurately in special ed. In fact, there's been a 38% increase over 12 years in the number of special ed teachers and other specialists needed to support all of those social services and student services programings that are required from psychological services to interventions to health services. So I think what we were trying to show and what the legislators understood is that financial commitments aren't going away. In fact, mandated costs are growing even though the total population may be declining. So essentially what we're doing is not asking for, there's no request to increase the budget at the rate of special program growth. We're just taking money from the declining programs and pushing it over to the specialized programs. So we're just shifting money from one section to the budget because one section of the budget for services is growing faster. That, this is the answer to the enrollment question. Layer on this a similar process that's taking place with health costs. So it, I guess the simplified answer is a decline in enrollment does not necessarily result in the ability to reduce staff.
What about the concerns if the 40B is built in Manchester?
The concern is just very straightforward. We will probably need additional staff to handle the additional enrollment, particularly at the elementary level, because that's where we've taken the majority of general ed, teaching position cuts as enrollment has declined.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Sarah. Okay, so then we have a new list generating. I think Mark Renzi would like to have another question, followed by Nina and Ben.
Yeah, thank, thank you. Is that working?
Yes, Mark, we can hear you.
Okay, good, good. I have to unmute both the computer and the phone. So, so, you know, Pam, I do think that you're making excellent points in terms of the costs associated with two different things, that the, the state is mandating additional services. And that, I think that rings true from a social perspective and recognizing that that seems to be something that's going up. And then secondly, healthcare costs are going up. I think you were explaining before that some of the, the way that you're negotiating with teachers is that the amount of sharing of healthcare costs is changing. Is that one thing that you were saying? And then secondly, that's, I saw it's a compound question. Secondly, is there something that just shows this out in numbers? Well, I mean, I understand it, you know, qualitatively, but is there, is there a spot in this presentation? I, I don't have the ability to flip through the presentation for, I don't know if others do. But is there a spot in here or that we can look at that lays that out cleanly? Because I think that that does help provide context. And then as we're thinking through the school budget, I think the last, the last point that I would like to make is that if we consistently are trying to, having cost increases in the school budget, that as we're looking at, and I'm not sure if this is the same for Manchester, but I, I have been speaking with some of the Manchester FinCom personnel. I think that, you know, you, you either have to keep it flat for everything else or try to find ways to cut costs for everything else to try to keep it, you know, flat. So I guess, you know, two questions, and I don't know if you could, could address them. And I, I realize that this, this one slide that's up here is pretty high level, but maybe, maybe if it's in here somewhere, then that's great. If not, some more detail would be helpful.
Sure. I don't think we have the OPEB slide, but that's something we could pull together. So a brief overview, when we inherit, when Avi and I started 2010, 11, healthcare was at an 80/20 split.
85/15.
85/15. Go for it, Avi. You know this like the back of your hand.
Yeah, it was, Pam's right. She was here 80/20. I came like about six months before. They just moved from 85/15. So I preceded her by about a few months. Yep. And we also had the, we also had retirees on the same plan. So one thing that we did, we adopted a state. There's, I, I think your big question is, can we put more information out there to show what's happened over time? The answer is yes. I'm going to give you a very quick rundown. There's that. We migrated retirees who were eligible to Medicare, for Medicare, onto Medicare as their primary plan through a provision in Mass General Law that requires that you just provide a supplemental plan to bring them into actuarial alignment with reactive plan where Medicaid, Medicare takes the bulk and we just take the supplemental. So we did that as well. The, then rolling forward, we did the OPEB adjustment where we moved people who were at 80 to 75. We, actually before that, we moved all new hires to 70/30. Then we moved the 75s to 70/30 in return, and we moved to a cheaper plan in return for putting some of that money into OPEB. And I mentioned before how we now have about, going through the '22 budget, we'll have $3 million in OPEB. So that's another thing that we, you know, a lot of other communities just don't fund OPEB at all and then it turns into a massive problem or an override or a special request for funding. We've done none of those. So, yeah, there's been a lot of changes there. And then subsequently, I talked a little bit about the most recent change being the adoption of the health reimbursement account in return for a 10% cheaper plan that also has higher deductibles. So it's a, it's a multi-year process. That's, I think essentially one, four different types of changes over a decade. And it's not something for, I mean, a resources stability standpoint. You know, we also want to have high-quality staff. We want the best staff come to our district. So it's a balancing act. You know, we keep, I think one of the questions I saw on the chat, which applies to compensation is, do we do comparables? Of course. And basically, one thing that we've made clear in our negotiations, and we've had a very willing partner on the other side, is that health insurance and compensation, they all come out of the same bucket. And so they're all connected. And, you know, we can look at what we do with compensation, but it can't be done independently of health insurance. We can look at what we do for both, but it can't be independently of what comparable rates are in other communities. And, and I think while all those changes are happening, I think you have to keep in mind, I think Pam mentioned, you know, the average increase for the COLA was, I think, around 1.9% for the, you know, seven to eight-year proceeding, the most recent agreement at 2.5%, which was in the middle of a very strong economy, by the way. But we have rankings as a school system. And I know rankings are always, you know, a question, but I think it is unquestionable to say that we have a very strong school system in terms of academic program and extracurricular programs and in terms of how students fare and in terms of educating the full child. And yet, our per pupil was much more middle and our average teacher compensation was much more middle. So the most recent contract, while making a lot of strides in the healthcare and acknowledging the fact that we had absorbed the 28% increase, also has to acknowledge that our teachers have been with us when we've had bad budget years and we've had to give a zero or a one or a one and a half. So I think the partnership's been very strong. And, you know, the approach we take is to, is to take out the multi-year budget model and to say whatever we have has to fit within the levy limit. And I think the proof is in the results that while we do see the stress on costs and all the things everyone's talking about are actual real stressors that we agree with you. We run the budgets. We, we have the same cost stresses. We've only really come for big revenue corrections, you know, once every decade or so. So I think the issues everybody is raising are real. It's not something that can be done to one side or to the other. It's got to be collaborative. But we've certainly been very innovative. And I would say, when you look at what we've done with OPEB, overall, I would say we tend to be on the leading edge. I talked at the Essex Finance Committee last week about how, you know, we've used a corporate proper for many years so that we can continue to get innovative ideas that are out in the corporate sector brought into what we do. Having said that, you know, how it is with comparables and in a market, you know, you can't, you can't divorce the market realities from what we do. And so just like Pam said, the teacher's contract is the same, sorry, the step and scale diagram, that grid is a grid that's in every state. So you can't just suddenly do something that's completely outside of the market norms. So it's a balancing act and I think we're very much focused on careful financial management and putting all the pieces into the puzzle. But I, I don't see that what we have is uniquely unsustainable and I feel like we have done a very good, a careful job to use data to inform our decision-making. Right now, we're looking at a contract that was on the higher end over the past decade. I think it's all, like I said, you know, in good economic times, that's, it's kind of hard to be at contracts that are very, you know, consistently low, which is kind of where we were. Flip side is, we've had continued innovation and partnership on healthcare. So it's a balancing act.
Um, we've had, I've had a request that we try, sort of try to wrap this up by nine. It's getting a little late. We do have also, wait, that was Mark's question, right? Then, Mark, did you get all that wrapped up? And then we have Nina and Ben waiting to talk.
Yeah, no, I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay, Nina.
Uh, thanks, Sarah. So I just had a really quick question, actually with the slide you have up, could be the first one. Is it possible to see what our compensation looks like? Because with that list of the top 10 districts, none of those are our neighbors. Those are very wealthy towns, even more so than Manchester, by the sea. So I'd just be curious if it is possible to see what our numbers look like to Hamilton, Wenham, to Ipswich, even Beverly, Gloucester, you know, et cetera, in terms of just the compensation. And then specific with that, if I'm reading the charts right, and I apologize if I don't understand it with the steps, it looks like there's 117 teachers, if I'm reading it correctly, that are at step 11 or higher. So I don't know if I'm reading it correctly, that step chart where it broke out steps to salaries. If, if that is correct, that we have 117 at step 11 or higher of the 150, if that, if that means Ted count, 150.
Yep. You, you just look at those numbers here in the total column.
Okay. That's 78. So that's just over three quarters. So 78% of our teachers are at the highest band. And not to go into whether or not teachers have a job for life, but it's just sort of that part of, I know we're trying to offset, but that is really, that just shows, and I've heard, I think Guy and others have brought it up, that that shows where it's great to say that teachers want to stay working here, but it also, is that limiting us from getting in new and vigorously also just, I keep to just be blunt, like, I guess, lower-cost teachers too. I don't know how it balances out, but to have 78% of the workforce on the highest cost just keeps us in an obstacle, I guess, or keeps us in a conundrum.
Very short answer to that question is that when we budget or transition, we try to set targets that are closer to something that is, you know, maybe like an M5 or something like that. But every position is different and based on what we need for that position, we obviously need to make sure we're getting the right person into the right place. But we do use big-picture budget targets to make use of savings when we can as people eventually separate from the district for whatever reason, retirement, moving away or what have you. So it's definitely something we're looking at.
And the only last thing I would just add, I'm sure Manchester is starting to see this too. Because of COVID, I brought this up within our last FinCom meeting, all of our taxes are going to go up, not just because of MRSD, we can say, because all of our valuations are going up. So we, those that are really being impacted by COVID, who have lost their jobs, et cetera, are actually getting a high tax bill at no fault of their own, at no additional expense beside the town. So I think I would emphasize of costs need to be kept in check because unless someone sells their house, they're not actually going to see this new valuation because everyone's leaving cities. And that's something that I think everyone needs to be aware of because that's what's going to hit those, you know, that are not using the school system mostly, those that are potentially on a fixed income.
So as we maybe walk away from the conversation about the grids and salaries, I think a good number to walk away with is the MRSD salary at average at 84. State average is 81,496. So we are only, in this statewide, so Western Mass to the coast, we are $3,000 higher than the state average income. Not the state average salary. So that might put in some perspective in terms of how far we are off the mark. It looks like we come in just about average while we actually compete with communities and have expectations commensurate with communities that are much higher paying, in part granted due to their geographic location.
All right. Nina, did you get everything answered?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thanks.
Okay. I think, I, I don't know where you can find all of that average salary for comparing towns across Cape Town, but a goo, good Google search might be able to.
This is available with the Department of Education. That's where the data comes from.
Thank you.
That's the person who tracks it down. And so you go on their site. They have a bunch of comparable tools and includes per pupil expenditure, but also average teacher salaries.
All righty.
And just while on per pupil expenditure from '19, we were looking at our neighbors, which gives you a sense of how they're spending, how their salary's backed into their spending as well. We are.
Great. So then Ben Vetrick had another question. So then we'll wrap up with you if nobody else.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. And I'll, I'll be quick. I just wanted to, sorry to belabor the point about the step and lane grid because I know that's gotten a lot of step play here. But it might, I just want to test my understanding. Because of the volume of teachers we have at step 15, that suggests to me that they're essentially maxed out, right? In terms of progressing down the vertical, which would suggest going forward. I mean, it tells you we have a lot of tenured teachers, you know, it is what it is, but it, it, you know, they're, they've already progressed through. So I assume that's correct, right?
Yes. One of the things we've talked about in prior conversations is that while you do, to Nina's point, get some benefit in a single year from bringing in people who are younger, less costly, et cetera, you have greater growth for those people over time. By contrast, people at the more expensive side eat up the total share of your dollars, but they eat up a lower percentage of your growth. And that's the kind of trade-off between the two factors.
Yep. Okay, so the second question I had just had to do with students from other communities who choice in to Manchester Essex. And I think I recall that, that, that number has come down a lot over the last decade in terms of what's choice in. And I was just wondering if that was due to capacity or, or, you know, what, what factors are those attributed to? And I'm wondering if there is an opportunity to use that as sort of a balancer based on capacity that we have in the district, you know, which, which could generate some more revenue potentially? Because it looked like we're not getting a lot of revenue. Looks like 325 actually on that one. If you could just comment on that.
So if I can be the person, you can clean it up for me, Avi. So I think it's a situation that spins on itself, to be honest. We began reducing the number of schools. Uh, we began reducing the number of school choice students in because we were graduating more students than we had capacity, as you initially said, to take in. So as Avi said before, we don't take kids in and create a class for school choice. It's not financially in our interest to do that. So we only bring kids in when there is excess capacity within a classroom. So when enrollment was high, no capacity. As enrollment declined, the, that's where we took cuts. So we, even though enrollment was going to allow for more capacity, we reduced the number of staff, so we lost the capacity to bring in the school choice kids. So instead of leaving room, bringing in school choice, we cut a classroom at the elementary. So we've been kind of taking the savings through staff reduction instead of taking revenue through school choice because we actually gained more by not replacing a, you know, $85,000 position than we would in taking in five school choice students. So we're at the point now where enrollment might work in our favor, but just in our budget discussion tonight, if we have to make cuts going into next year, personnel is our largest, our largest cost center, so that's where we'll be looking to make reductions. So we could once again be cutting off our opportunity to bring in school choice revenue because we're forced to make some staffing cuts. The other unknown in a different column is COVID. If we have to stay at six foot or four and a half feet, whatever the social distancing guidelines may be continued into next year, hopefully none. Um, but if we do have, um, the same level of guidelines as we do this year, we just don't have the space.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Um, so I think that's it for tonight. Um, we do have another budget hearing coming up. Maybe, um, Avi and Pam, do you guys want to say any last words to send us off?
Just thanks for the questions. It's always a good to, um, dig in deep to the process. And you can always send us a note or give us a call. We're happy to, uh, chat with you about any of this. And many thanks to Avi for pulling all the numbers together.
Okay, and, um, the other committees need to call their meetings to, uh, close to adjourn. So let's, uh, Ruth is there. We'll let her go first.
Sarah, thank you. So for the Essex Board of Selectment, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
All those-
All right. Thank you, Essex Board of Selectmen. How about, uh, Essex Finance or Manchester?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the Essex Finance Committee as I think we did hit a quorum.
Mike put in second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
All right. Bye, Essex FinCom. How about Manchester FinCom?
We do not have the meeting posted. I don't believe we have a quorum, so we won't need to adjourn.
Excellent. Very nice having you join us, Sarah, and those of you who were able to come. And yeah, thank everybody for coming. I know that was a little long, but hopefully we were able to answer, um, most of your questions and we'll be back again for another round. And as Pam and Avi said, please reach out, um, if you have questions. If you have finance questions, do not reach out to me. Reach out to Avi and Pam and, um, Shannon and, and Annie, who are our finance committee people right now. That would be awesome. Um, all right. So, uh, do I have a motion to adjourn the school committee meeting?
Adjourn, Shannon.
Second?
Teresa.
Great. And then we need to adjourn by roll call vote since we are, um, virtual. So Eric, maybe on the phone. I don't know if he was able to get in. Okay, Eric, Shannon, um, is Matt here?
No, Matt wasn't able to make it tonight.
All right. And, uh, Teresa was the second, right? And then Annie? Okay, and I'm a yes. So there we go. We're out. Thank you again, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you, Avi and Pam.